Call meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
The move, second.
Move was by Cass and second by Mary. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Is that right? Sorry. Okay.
Motion is carried. Second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and March twenty-first, two thousand four.
I'll do approve.
The motion by Mary.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? And then I'll call for a motion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those approve, same sign. Motion is carried, those minutes are approved. Item three on the agenda is public comment. The state board's agenda is full and I will place a maximum of thirty minutes for public comment. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of your allotted time, I'll ask you to conclude and the board will move to the next speaker. The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda. A topic from public comment that is not related to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. We have public comment this morning.
Good morning. If you're joining us through Zoom and you wish to address the board, you can use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in, you press star nine on your phone to raise your hand and I'll promote you to speaker. Let's give a minute to look for anyone on here. Again, if you just joined us as I was talking, you can just use the raise hand button on Zoom to address the board. Okay, seeing none today.
Okay, Director's Report.
Certainly. Thank you, President Robbins and Vice President Axiotus and members of the State Board. And thank you as always for your service on this impactful board. We'll keep today's Director's Report brief given we are meeting in just two weeks. So we'll share many of our systems updates then, but I do want to cede some of this time to our Bureau Chief over School Business Operations who has supported one of the main agenda items for today's meeting for some updates and some historical background on the budget approval process. If that's a good time for that. If you'll join us.
Good morning, Board members. Good to see you again. Today, the AEA budgets will be presented for your consideration. Historically, the budgets have been presented by the department on behalf of all of the AEAs at the same time for collective action. Beginning this year, the AEAs will individually present their budgets. The budget process can take multiple months. Proposed budgets were published and approved by the local boards in January or February. Budget presentation materials for today were initially due on March twenty-ninth. On March twenty-seventh, House File twenty-six twelve was enacted, which modified funding that will be available to AEAs beginning July one, two thousand twenty-four. In response to the enactment, the AEAs collectively requested and were granted an extended deadline of April twelfth in order to update the budgeted revenues and expenditures planned for FY twenty-five based on changes contained in House File twenty-six twelve. The action taken by the State Board today will be based upon the published budget in conjunction with the updated revenues and expenditures presented by each AEA. Each AEA will present their own information in their own order. However, to ensure consistent presentation of materials for action, the budget information is uniformly formatted and presented in your board books as item point one, point two, the executive summary addendum. Page one is the published budget. That was approved by the AEA boards without changes. Page two, the first two tables reflect the updated expenditures and revenues for changes contained in House File twenty-six twelve. The third table is an estimated FY twenty-five ending fund balance for all budgeted funds calculated by the department based on the updated expenditures and revenues presented by each AEA. The department is recommending budget approval for eight AEAs and recommending the budget for one AEA be returned with comments since the ending balance is projected to be negative. Based on past precedents then, it is recommended that AEA submit by the May ninth State Board meeting a written assurance that the AEA will construct a plan to balance the budget for FY twenty-five and submit a balanced budget plan approved by the AEA board no later than September first. At the May ninth State Board meeting, the State Board will take action regarding the published and approved budget in conjunction with the updated revenues and expenditures included today as well as the written assurance to balance the budget. This allows the AEA's budget to still be approved by the statutory May fifteen deadlines.
Okay, any questions for Cassandra?
I have a question and I think it applies to all. And maybe Thomas should weigh in too, but I'm pretty sure you know about this, Cassandra. So in looking at the statute, two seventy-three, three twelve, it talks about our review. And it says, we review proposed budgets of each AEA. And before May one, we grant approval or return it without approval with comments included. All of the AEA boards have approved the budgets from January. Is that right?
Correct.
So is our standard of review today a deferential one, but also taking into account the updates? Or, I mean, you know, are we, are we, I'm trying to compare this to other things that we do as a, you know, like deferring to local school boards, for example, on a decision. Are we to approve unless we see something unreasonable or arbitrary or something like that? Can you give me some help on how to look at this?
I would say.
Start with Cassandra.
Okay.
I would just say the first thing is to make sure that they're not planning to overspend their budget and that is what we based our recommendation to return.
Okay. Which, which would kind of be unreasonable or outside the, what they're supposed to do.
Correct.
Excuse me, I don't think we're going to get into the weeds and question line item budget.
No, I get it. That's kind of what I'm getting at. I mean, I, how could we? You know, it says this line item, this much money. How do I know if it's reasonable or not?
I think we need to look at the big picture. That's why the executive addendum was put in.
Got it.
So we'll look at, focus on what they had to tell us today about their budget and their special expenditures that they may or may not have. But what we're approving is that executive addendum, the document which is consistent among, among all of them. And not get into questioning line item budget.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page when we start this process.
And this is a unique year because it's a, it's a transition between two funding structures. The budgets they approved in January and February, the funding structure doesn't apply anymore. So this year is unique. It's sui generis. Next year, when the funding structures are more stable and settled in statute, the scope of review will be, this is just an interesting transitional year. And so there, there might be a little bit more scrutiny on the top line in the coming years, but it really is a top line question. Are you overspending? At a, at a top level, are you allocating resources correctly to meet your needs?
Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other questions? And I just wanted to call your attention to NASB webinar coming up, excuse me, on on May sixth, it's artificial intelligence, which is interesting, but what I found, I was reading more about the webinar that's coming up. It's, they have experts from code.org that have produced policies, recommendations, whatever, for artificial intelligence. It was developed by twelve national education organizations, including NASB. And so it's just not a NASB thing. It's, it's very broad and to me, it's kind of, it's very timely. But they have a toolkit that they're going to go through and kind of walk through some of the key factors of AI and education. So if you have an opportunity on May sixth, there's a NASB webinar coming up on AI. So a little update.
And President Robbins, that same group came to, the Teach AI is coordinated with code.org, came to the Iowa and Workplaces Summit and presented a preliminary draft of that toolkit. So our team and educators across the state had direct access to those experts as well.
Then we'll catch up to them.
Yeah.
That's all I have from NASB and I think we're ready for next item on the agenda is Harland. We're ahead of schedule already. Good morning.
Good morning.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. If someone could maybe direct about, are you hooked to Zoom so you can get the slides up? Thanks. My name's Cindy Yelich. I'm the Chief Administrator at Heartland Area Education Agency. To my left, we have Mr. Kurt Subra, who is our Chief Financial Officer. To my right is Mr. Brian Whalen, who is our Business Manager. As the first AEA to present today, I have been asked to do just a real general overview about the AEA system and our funding streams, and then we'll get into specifics for Heartland itself.
It should, should work now, Kurt. It was disabled at first.
Right. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come today and talk to you about our budget, our services. What we wanted to start with is just a general overview of that the AEAs, the AEAs provide services in three broad areas. The majority of our work or the bulk of our work is in special education. That makes up about seventy-three to seventy-five percent of each AEA's budget. The second area is media and technology. And the third area then is educational services. Media and technology, each make up between fifteen, seventeen percent of each AEA's budget. And we'll spend a little time digging into what is, what services are represented in each of those three broad funding streams. We also wanted to point out, these are just.
I double click.
She said, yeah. So all three, all nine, eight AAs provide services in both public and accredited non-public settings. So this is just a snapshot at Heartland about what those, that mix of schools and delivery access points are. We have about fifty-three public school districts, thirty-two accredited non-public schools, and at this point, one charter school. Although we have been engaged in meetings throughout the fall and I think we're excited to welcome some new charter schools into the Heartland area for the next year. That entitles about a hundred and fifty-three thousand students, eleven thousand teachers. One of the things that I think it's important to talk about in the context of the budget discussion is that the current AEA formula, which we know is changing for the next fiscal year, does count students in accredited non-public schools and includes them in the formula for both education services and media services. That is not the same case for special education. So at this time, students enrolled in accredited non-public schools are not included in the special education funding formula for the AEAs. What, how that works then in accredited non-public schools is that the public district provides the instructional support, but the AEA still provides what we call related services. So if a student is enrolled in accredited non-public school, they could still receive speech language services, occupational therapy, physical therapy supports for, from a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing in that non-public setting. So while the district, the resident district or the district where the non-public school is located is responsible for that instructional end, we are still responsible for that support and related servicing. So we'll talk a little bit more deeply about what you see in each of those three service areas. And these would be typical across all nine AEAs. We provide screening, evaluation, assessment that helps identify which students are entitled to special education. Assistive technology, as you can imagine, in the fifty years since the AEAs were started, this is an area that has changed tremendously as students have had access to personal devices in ways they haven't historically. There's been great gains in personal communication through the use of iPads and other assistive technology. Audiology supports, occupational physical therapy, speech language, speech and language services. That is probably the area that most people across the state are familiar with. They've touched a lot of students, both prior to getting to school and then once they are in school. We have social work, school psychology and behavior supports, which is a very much in-demand and growing need in schools. And then vision, deaf and hard of hearing services. Service coordination is something that applies to our youngest, our youngest students and families. So a baby that is born and spends time in the NICU before they even leave the hospital, they have access to a coordinator from the AEA who helps them coordinate services across not just the AEA, but medical and then social services that might be related in the community. And then obviously there's support for special education teachers and administrators. Right now, that can involve helping teachers learn to work in the ACHIEVE system or develop high-quality IEPs. Just as a point of reference, this year we have five hundred and I think forty teachers that are on conditional or provisional licenses for special, to teach special education. That's a huge number across the state and that actually draws down services because they need support since they are coming out of institutions of higher ed without having that special education background. Our staff spends quite a bit of time just helping them get acclimated to teaching in the special education area. And those are things that as the new legislation is implemented, we'll see some shift in that. Because as the Department of Education assumes total responsibility for general education and compliance, we'll see that there'll be some identification just of where our services will land and how that will connect then with the support that the Department of Education will be providing. Media technology is an area that has significantly changed since the start of the AEA system in the mid nineteen seventies. In the beginning, we were each charged with having a lending library of professional materials and also materials for students. So teachers in schools can check out additional materials to supplement classroom libraries. They can check out professional materials. They can also check out book kits. So if they want every student in the classroom to read the same novel, that's available. But as you can imagine, that has really shifted from a hard physical library to a lot of e-resources. So we provide, we are able to buy down at a state level at a greatly reduced cost a lot of search engines, electronic materials that students and teachers are able to access. We still have printing and creative services, so that is an area where we can provide supports to schools that when they need materials printed or developed, and there's also specialized materials in that area such as signage and graphic design, that's the one we're accessing when they're doing things electronically. We have a van system and while this one shows up in media and technology, you would see that this supports services across all three funding streams. So while it does deliver books and resources and creative materials that a district might have ordered, it also delivers occupational and physical therapy equipment, assistive technology devices, science kits, a whole myriad. During COVID, we, the state was able to access the van delivery system to deliver PPE and other materials. It's also something that is tapped sometimes by the state, at the state level when there's a special item that they're trying to get out to all schools. We have technology support in this area. This is something that varies across AEAs. The core set of technology support to get on the ACHIEVE system, which will be in special education or implementing instructional practices that incorporate technology in the classroom are standard. There are some specialized areas. We have one AEA that for many, several years now has been delivering actual technology support to districts and that's a contracted service. And we have a couple AEAs that are doing cybersecurity support for schools and it's also a contracted service.
A quick, quick question about, the last ballpoint, the deficits in special ed. Does Harland typically use this fund to cover deficits?
Yes. So for the past several years, as you're probably aware, education service, education services and media and technology budgets can be used to supplement special education, but it cannot go the opposite way. So special ed money cannot be spent in the other funding areas. And Kurt could talk about historically the levels at which Heartland has accessed that.
Just ballpark.
One to three million a year.
Okay, thank you.
So some very specific things, because I know we were asked to provide examples of programs that are in each of those three areas. This is organized in universal, what is available across the system. And then as you see, it kind of goes specialized and targeted services. So those are more specific. And then things that are held specifically in media and technology. So universally, everybody has access to assessment support. This is also something that has really changed over time. We now have specialists that run reports, can access work of the district when they're saying, we want to look at a specific data set and longitudinally maybe how that student group has performed or look at other factors that they think are impacting that data. So they're able to work with them to pull that data and analyze that data and then display it in a way that's accessible for that school community. The other things I'll highlight here are just some things that are specific to Heartland. And you see, though, some of those examples are italicized here. Under specialized service, Heartland has a pretty significant crisis response and reunification team. You might have heard that that team was accessed heavily during the tragedy in Perry Community School District. So within a couple hours, we had a team that was out there that was helping reunify families. Where maybe the parents had been at work, the students were at school and getting them reconnected. But then that crisis response continues that there's immediate on in-person crisis support or therapeutic support for families and students and teachers that were impacted. And then as time goes on, that support for people that need ongoing support is transitioned to the mental health region. So in Heartland's case, that would be heart of Iowa. So for that first seventy-two hours, the Heartland team was there specifically for that and then that transitioned. Then we remained intact to help them get school reopened, develop a plan to do that, access other community resources that they needed. When we.
That is a, that is a huge undertaking, especially the first seventy-two hours. I don't think people appreciate detail that and how extreme and bold that is. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. I happen to be the Chief Administrator at Great Prairie AEA when the crisis team was called to support Fairfield after the teacher was killed. And it also mirrored that first seventy-two hours was critical and it helps, it helped us in that community get the clergy set up because they are the ones that deliver some of that ongoing support. And in that case, they needed a lot of communication support. So that's another aspect of that crisis response that some schools need to access. So just to give you a different example. But while those two are sort of the most well-known incidents, the crisis response team is probably sent out across the state once a week because we respond to if a student dies, is killed, if there's a staff member that is passes and that impacts the school community. So while you've seen a lot of conversation and press about those two large cases, I just want you to know that is a service that's tapped routinely and is highly valued by schools. As we slide over to targeted services, the example from Heartland that we would pull out is the therapeutic classroom in Winterset. So Winterset Community School District worked in combination and conjunction with Heartland AEA to set up a therapeutic classroom program. This was actually done before the state had allocated the therapeutic classroom grants. So that program was started and now they have three classrooms and they draw students from across the Heartland area to be served in that program. And as we look then to the far column, media technology, the one item that we have highlighted and pulled out there is the Pope County Tech Consortium. So we provide software support for Johnston, West Des Moines and Davenport schools. That's a specialized business software program that we're able to support and provide that on a fee-for-service now. Are there any questions about programs and services? This is the last slide that we'll talk about. For Heartland, that was kind of the general overview for the AEA system. We're shifting now to talk about Heartland specifically, and then I'll turn it over to Kurt and Brian to talk about the budget aspect, which is why we're here today. So what you see here is our organizational chart that we were asked to provide for our AEA. You can see we currently have a board of directors. Our board consists of parents of students with disabilities. We have some retired, two retired superintendents, a retired curriculum director, a professor from one of the institutions of higher education that has a teacher education program. So we have a fairly diverse group on our board. And it's been helpful for us in planning and thinking about services as we move ahead to help shape those. And then we also have, just we'll go through that green level. We have four members on our cabinet team. We have the chief academic officer, a chief of student services, and then a chief of human resources and our chief financial officer. Is there any question about how Heartland is structured? All right, with that, thank you so much. I'll turn it over to Kurt and Brian.
Okay, good morning. So you can see here our staff makeup in terms of FTEs, about eighty percent or more of our staff are certified staff members. One piece that also is unique to Heartland is we have a contract, a special education contract with Des Moines Public Schools. That goes way back to the beginnings of Heartland back in the seventies. Des Moines had their own teacher retirement system, still does. But the idea was, at that time, those staff members didn't want to leave their pension system. So Des Moines hires the staff that we routinely hire, like social workers, SLPs, that kind of thing. And then we pass money through to them to reimburse them essentially for about one hundred and eighty-five to one hundred and ninety-five staff each year. So that doesn't, it does distort or it changes how our financials look maybe compared to the rest of our AEA's. So just a unique aspect of Heartland. So we're going to start on the expenditure side rather than the revenue here, but just to keep a couple of things in mind. One, this represents not only our general fund, which is the vast majority of this, but it's also shelter care and a few other funds, smaller funds. And this is, I can think about this, we put the publicated, published budget on the left. And then the more recent budget, we submitted that, I think, to April eleventh. That's on the right. But it's really a continuum, if you think about it, because when we published, published with zero percent SSA and we published with a seven point five percent statewide cut to the AEA, that's the permanent cut in law. So we can't make assumptions beyond that when we publish the budget. Then when you look at April eleventh, we're still on this continuum. We, so we started the published budget. April eleventh was a point in time for us. The legislature was done nine days later. So there were some major decisions they made in the wee hours of the morning on April twentieth that impacted these numbers that aren't reflected here. And then where we are today. So we know better information today than we knew a week ago, obviously. And so the biggest part of that is that twenty-five million dollars additional cut to special ed. Over seven million of that is Heartland's. And that's, that was unknown when we submitted our budget, just again, less than two weeks ago. So we did make some assumption, we did make some changes to our budget certainly because of information we knew. But we didn't, it's not, it's not our end budget, I would say, our final working budget, because now we have information we didn't have at that time. So we did at the time, we'd already made some decisions on staffing, or at least we anticipated some staffing changes a few weeks back, but we were still working through that. And I think now we've pretty much landed on where we're going to be now for next year. But again, that was, now that's about two to three weeks after we submitted the budget. So it really was truly a point in time, but a work in progress. And we've continued to work on it even after that time. Are there any specific questions I can answer on the expenditure side?
How long has that seven point five been in place?
Since the early two thousands. I think it was around two thousand and two to two thousand and four in that timeframe.
It's a recurring.
Yeah, the seven point five has been written in the law for the last twenty years, roughly.
So that's not new?
No, no.
What was new, or what is new to Heartland fiscally with the, that standing seven point five cut that's been in two thousand and two is that up until this year, the percent of reduction was calculated on student enrollment in two thousand and two. So that formula was in place in two thousand and two and then was frozen. And that's how they calculated cuts across special education. This year, there has been a shift to change that to, I don't know if it's actually current enrollment or a year, a year in the rear enrollment. But as you can imagine, over time, enrollment in the Heartland area in the middle of the state has grown and in other AEA's it has decreased. So that then amounts to about an extra one point nine, two million dollar adjustment for us that we needed to make this year.
A map of our regional service areas, we divide our organizationally into eight regions. Des Moines Public being a region in and of itself. But you can see just with the little white stars on here where our offices are located. In some cases, it's a classroom in Guthrie Center. A couple of cases, it's a, it's some lease space we leased from DMAC. In other cases, it's in private facility and then we own four buildings. One in Johnston and one in Ames and one in Adele. And that's listed on the next page, actually. You look at our primary assets and then in terms of physical assets, the owned buildings and then bands where other items were asked for when we originally received a request for items to submit today. And so we, we, I obviously see a list of delivery vans here. So again, as we publish the budget, again, we published it back in January. More or less balanced. We did expect to spend a little bit more than what we took in, but that was in part, primarily because we had a construction project that we had budgeted for in twenty-five that we will no longer plan to do. Part of it remodel, ongoing remodel project. It's always interesting, again, when you publish, knowing what history has been for the special ed cut and compared to what, what the law would say. The law would say that Heartland's share of seven point five would, historically would be at one point seven million. But we also know that last year, the overall cut was not seven point five million, it was twenty-nine, or for the current year, I should say, it was twenty-nine point six million. So we tried to make some adjustments in our budget to reflect that we don't want to overstate or understate our fund balance. We're trying to get to a fund balance number. So we have to make some adjustments in there because of the major assumption we have to make on what will happen with the cut, which will typically be determined in April. And then on the revenue side of our budget, again, I think about this as getting us closer, but the primary piece that's missing from this would be the seven point, I think, three million dollars that we will reduce this by with the final legislation on special ed cut. So that's our piece of, additional piece of the, of the special ed cut that was in the final standings bill. But we have reduced expenditures here, but but we know we'll be making some additional adjustments because again, we want to match up as best we can revenues and expenditures, but we also know we're going to, for fiscal twenty-five, because of the timing of all changes, we will draw down some reserves in fiscal twenty-five. It's like, I'm sure we probably will in fiscal twenty-six to make it all work. But we're, we are, again, adjusting staffing. We expect to have at least forty positions left open or because of attrition or in some cases we had to make some reductions in force. And so, but we expect that to be at least forty FTEs will be down for next year. And I'm guessing we'll be down significantly more the following year.
So is that one hundred and thirteen million, is that including SSA?
It does include SSA of a lot of million and a half. But it, but it also includes, doesn't include that seven and a half million dollar impact of the final cut.
Thank you.
Seven point three million. So this is closer to one hundred and six million. It is where I think we'll be on revenues for next year for not only general fund, but again, some of those other smaller funds. Another thing I would point out, because of the special ed contract we have with Des Moines and because all AEA's pass through IDEA federal funds for special ed to our districts. In the case of Heartland of this, so let's say it's the one hundred and six million is where we end up at the end of the day. About twenty-five million of the one hundred and six gets passed through to our districts. Big part of that is Des Moines, but all districts have some pass-through. And so again, we kind of think of this then as, when we think about our budget next year, if it's one hundred and six million in revenue, about ninety million of that will stay to, for Heartland operations, if you think of it that way, and to pay our staff and to keep our lights on. And, but again, that's, that's typical for Heartland. About twenty-five million dollars a year will pass through to our, to our entities. And that's also reflected then in our expenditures, just like it would be here in the revenues.
And school districts apply, submit applications for their federal.
Yes. Or the compliance part of that for the Department of Ed to monitor those funds. And then this shows a history of our fund balances. The unassigned fund balance you can see in green and then the overall fund balance in our blue there. So we have some restricted fund balances. For example, it might be TSS. We are the fiscal agent for AEA Learning Online, so those numbers are in our books. We also have some committed funds, again, mainly for capital projects that would be in the, in the part that's above the unassigned, but yet part of the overall fund balance that we're talking about here.
I was calculating your, your unassigned balance based off of kind of older numbers. You're looking at about a nine point five-ish percent for assigned.
Over nine percent, yes.
Is that, is that within your target range or if?
It is.
A board goal or?
Historically, we talk about five to ten percent is where we'd like to be. ISB's recommendation is seven to seventeen percent. So we're within that range. Overall, as an AEA system, if you take AEA fund balance divided by AEA revenues statewide, for about fifteen and a half percent. So again, that's right in the range that ISB would, would, would want, would suggest that entities are in when they talk about school districts, for example. I think for school districts, since I mentioned them, I think their overall number statewide right now is about twenty percent for fund balance as a solvency ratio, I should say. So we're about, we're about five percent less, six percent less than that as an AEA system. And then Heartland's at about nine, a little over nine percent.
Thank you.
And then this is just a slide that shows the published budgets. Can't read it here, obviously, but it's the published budget and the work, good work that Gina did to summarize all this, that, that information, original publication would have been part of that as well. That's all we have.
Open to any questions you might have for us?
You're saying that you're going to be obviously reducing staff given the landscape.
Yes.
Your position number is forty?
For next year, through attrition and other people, yeah, attrition and a few rifts, we're going to be down probably at least forty. Could be, could be.
So are those forty in the correct positions that need to be attrition or?
So we, the forty are predominantly in the education services and media services area. Several of our staff members who had, who were in those areas had a license that would allow them also to practice within the special education area. They were psychologists, social worker. And so we moved them into any open positions we had in the special ed area. So you would see if you just were looking across the three areas, significant reduction in education services and media services.
I've heard that the AEs were potentially losing some staff because of uncertainty. Have you experienced that as well?
We certainly have staff across all areas that have sought what they perceive to be a more stable situation. Some of our staff can work in the mental community, so they have gone that route. A few of them have gone back into public school districts. Some of them chose to retire on a different time when they were on, and we have a few that have chosen to leave the state.
Other questions for the Heartland team? We have in your in your board package, we have executive summary. Four point one point two for Heartland. See the agenda in your. Cassandra, correct me if I'm wrong, is this the document that we will be approving?
Correct. So it'd be the first page is the published budget. And then the second page is the updated, the documents and updating.
Is there any consideration that needs to account, knowing that there's further implications of the legislation that impacts their budget?
I think
that are reflected.
I think at this point in time, I think this is our, our best, best scenario as far as proving what is reasonable, the deck, and knowing that there's going to be some tweaks there and there between now and then. And you're putting together budgets in the world of education, you don't know all the specifics or some things that are dangling out there like that's what I say. So I think this document that is prepared is legitimate. It will be a hundred percent accurate. Probably not. We'll be close as far as what we need to approve saves.
And just a reminder, we routinely amend our budgets in, in the early, in the winter. As we're submitting our new budget for twenty-six next year, we will also amend this budget. And that's just routine for us because there's always assumptions we have to make that we know better information.
Right. It's not unusual for, for educational organizations to amend their budgets. I think usually it went overspending, yes.
No, I was just thinking, knowing we, the changes that came post legislative session and knowing we're meeting again in two weeks, if it wouldn't, we reflected at least those changes before we approved.
I don't think two weeks is going to make a big difference, certainly.
So, and, and it has been, and is the board statutory duty to review and approve budgets by the, by the May deadline. We provided an extension to ensure additional time to reflect any updates based on, on the, the general assembly and legislative sessions. The board, of course, has the purview to request updates to the budget as it is implemented. But, but again, I would just remind us of the statutory deadlines.
Well, here there's an estimated ending fund balance of over fourteen million. They're not planning to overspend. I guess I would ask, given the new state of the world and the new law, are, do you believe you're addressing what your services are to be adequately with this budget as updated?
Let me just speak specifically.
I know, it's a big question.
Yes, some of the aspects of the law, I could give you a few examples. One of them is a statement that will reduce administration by thirty percent over two years. And we have made reductions in administration that have us on target to meet that expectation. I think also we have moved, reduced staffing in education media services. I think also we have moved, reduced staffing in education media services. Know that next year with the 40% flow of dollars that's generated from the formula in that area, that really will be the year to determine what things will be sustainable through a fee for service model and what things need to be permanently sunset. But because we've already reduced some in that area, we aren't anticipating a cliff then in two years. And then as we look at what we believe to be our requirements for child find and provision of related services, we've worked hard to keep staffing stable in those areas. Tried to fill any positions, openings we had for speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, those kinds of things. So tried to provide as much stability in special education as we can. We know, I'm working with the department over the next 12 months, we'll have a lot more clarity on how the compliance function is going to play out, what things we will continue to provide, what things then will shift to the new division of special education. So what I'm trying to say is we're doing our best to look at what was spelled out, hit the target of administrative reduction, hit the target of reduction in moving to free for service and education and media, and then have started collaborating with the department on how the provision of special education is going to look across the state over time. So we've made our best shot.
Thank you.
Other questions for the Heartland team? Hearing now, request a motion to approve the published budget as found in 4.1, 2, the executive summary addendum.
Downloaded. Second.
Okay, it's been ruled by Brooke and seconded by Brian. Need further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Upon the same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, Central Rivers. It's a no vote. We will take Central Rivers and we'll have a, a short break and come back with Grant Wood. Congratulations on your.
Thank you, I appreciate that, appreciate that. Want to jump in, all right. First of all, thank you very much for allowing us to have this time. My name is Joel Pedersen, current Chief Administrator at Central Rivers AEA. I will be transitioning to the president position at North Iowa Area Community College on July 1st. And I'll let you introduce yourself, Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Coombs Johnson, and I'm the CFO at Central Rivers, shared CFO. I'm also with Mississippi Ben, so you'll see me again at a later presentation.
So you have a rookie and you have someone who started in January. So, you know, we'll hope to be as smooth as Heartland on, on that one, but we appreciate the opportunity. If it's okay with you, we were going to kind of jump a little ahead of our slides and not do as much overview of the AEA system because it's very similar from that standpoint to. I did want to draw your attention and not something we're going to actually share today, but on, on this particular slide, I would love for you to have some time maybe outside of this meeting to view these three, three videos of what we would say success stories at Central Rivers AEA and children that we worked with from a young age. And one student is working at Winnebago right now, like his family. Another student we saw just got employee of the month at Hy-Vee in Cedar Falls, Olivia. And then Caroline is currently at Drake University. So just these great stories of, of really how our services are supposed to work and, and help kids be successful and, and allow families to be, be proud of their, of their children. So from that standpoint. Just want to give you a little bit of the overview of Central Rivers AEA. Many of you know, geographically, we are a large AEA. You know, John knows that as, as working with us through the years. And we, at one time, were three separate AAs and now we're consolidated, I believe, around 2004. We serve 60 plus 64,000 students, 5,000 educators, 53 public schools, 18 non-public schools, 18 counties. And I've learned a lot about that over this, this past year and put a lot of miles on, on the car. And it would tell you that it's been fun because each, each community has their own unique kind of charm and their main street is a little different than somebody else's. And so I'm going to do that. 500 staff members working, 500 plus staff members working at Central Rivers AEA this past year. Just to give you kind of a flavor of what we look like from a map standpoint. We are broken down by sectors and also regions. Next year, with the loss of some regional administrators, we're moving to more of a sector approach, which means those four different colors there will be our sectors and we'll actually not be following quite the regional administrator approach that we've had in the past from that standpoint. Currently, we have three offices, an office in Clear Lake, Mason City area, Marshalltown, and our Cedar Falls office is our main office. And then also a real jewel of, of Central Rivers is if you've never had a chance to go to River Hills School in Cedar Falls, it's just a magical place where we serve close to 80 students with special education challenges. And we have, I believe, 26 schools that actually bring kids to, to Cedar Falls every day. And it's really neat to watch the, the buses and the transportation. They, they police each other, the bus drivers. So if you get out of line, they, they let you, they let you know. And if you ever have a chance to go there, it will definitely touch your heart about the work that's, that's going there too, from that standpoint. Just really a general description, similar to what you would see in, in many of the AEA's. We talked about our offices, we talked about van delivery, normal print shop. We, we do do quite a bit of extensive work and creative services and print shop. For example, we do all of Cedar Falls Community Schools printing. And we're able to do that at a much lower cost for them. And so we're, as we move into this new era, we're going to be continuing to work with other schools. We also through code have the ability to actually work with you and I. And so we're going to be talking to them at some point if we can help, help them too with some of those services. Yeah, I think that's pretty good on that one. I think this is an important one that I want to share particularly to Central Rivers. When you look at our organizational structure, one of the things I want to draw your attention to, I was just looking this up in section 17 of House File 2612, it talks about progress of reducing administrator expenditures by 30% by July 1st of 2026. So I want to walk you through a little bit of what's happening at Central Rivers, partly because we've had people leaving and we felt like, and the board made, I think, very good decisions to try to look at how we could share with some of our partners. We'll be doing extensive sharing with Keystone AEA, which is to the east of us and primarily in that Dubuque area. In the area of special education, Amy Knapp will be retiring and Annette Hyde from Keystone will be filling that position. So really it's, it's, it's sharing a position and quite a bit of a reduction of, of costs there. Educational services, Jen Segres is heading to Norwalk and Tisha Moat of Keystone will be filling that dual role. Of course, we have nine unbelievable Board of Directors that I've had a privilege to work with and have all different backgrounds. From an executive leadership standpoint, Stan Regans, Regans is going to, and he'll make sure that he, if he, if I didn't pronounce that right, he'll, he'll, he'll let you know. We'll be moving into the Chief of Administration role and will be shared by both of those agencies. In Human Resources, we have that. And in Business Office, Jennifer right now has told us that she'll help us out for another year. So you can see that four of our cabinet positions will be shared with, with Keystone AEA. We see that as an opportunity to learn. We go into it not knowing if everything will work perfectly, but we already have had discussions. I'll give you a perfect example of why I'm excited about this. We are struggling to get SLPs, which are language pathologists. And Keystone, for whatever reason, had a number of people apply for that position. And we're already going to be looking at how we can work together to fill some of our gaps with that. So I think hopefully that'll be a flavor that you're going to be seeing across the state. But we just were in a position to do more of that quickly. And even though it's, it's, it's not perfect, we feel like it's putting our agencies in a good position going forward. And then you'll be hearing more about that because I know there, no other AEA's are doing that also as, as they are having people retire from that standpoint. This is just a, a employee summary of, of, you know, and, and I think this is a really good one because sometimes you may get the question of, you know, why are salaries higher and particularly in some employees in the AEA? And I think one of the, the things to remember about that is, and certainly I think we can have that discussion about salaries from that standpoint. But if you just look at that, you know, when, when 297 of your employees have master's degrees, that's naturally going to, to move salaries up. You know, PhDs, certainly a lot of us, you know, are come from the, my Thomas. Good to see you. So from that standpoint, it just allows you to know that you're going to have salaries up higher just because the sheer number of the employees and the background that the employees are bringing in from that area. So I think that's important as, as a task force looks at that, just to have some flavor of, of the employees that are, you know, working within the, the agencies.
This is a specific staff detail on that I think everyone received. It was based on function code and, and how staff coded. So I think you all have that. I'll dig into the revenues. Some of it would be kind of repetitive, what Kurt had just said, and probably all of the AEA's to who are coming forward. But the first two columns again are based on that initial budget that we had presented. A couple of things I just wanted to point out what is in each of these lines. Local revenues, those are our sharing agreements with our districts, our River Hills School that Joel mentioned, managed services, IT services, work experiences. So those are some of the local services that we provide outside of the taxes and state aid, you know what those are. Other state revenues are those categorical funds that are specific funds to each AEA and how we have to use those such as TSS, TQ, the Children's Mental Health Grant, the IDEA grant there that is in its separate line. Federal rev, other federal revenues, we do receive title funds, Title I and Title III funds, which is in that line item. And then our other financing services or sources is our debt service. We do have debt that poured there. So the first two columns again are based on that initial budget that we presented. And then the second two columns reflect the House File 2612 where you can see that the revenues are reduced. We did reduce for TQ as well because TQ will not be a funded fund that we receive. And our FEP grant through the IDEA is reduced as well. Any questions on the revised revenue slide? Moving on to the expenditures. Again, we are still in a process of not knowing what our staffing will look like exactly because of both attrition and people resigning. So our expenditures are not reflective of all of those reductions. We've had 71 staff members leave so far, which those dollars are still reflected in that column, the House File 2612 column. So we do know that we have expenditures here that are overinflated because of that. We know that we won't bring back 71 positions. We did reduce for that FEP grant as well. We had some dollars budgeted for some capital projects that we removed for this next year as well, not knowing what the unknowns are still for next year. We do anticipate that districts will, will still want to participate in our, our ed service and media services. So we don't know what revenue we'll be generating for that as well, over and above that 40% that we'll receive next year and, and the 60% that is still outstanding. So again, that is still an unknown that we will be working through this next year as we have talks with our districts and contracts that go forward next year. This next slide is just, and I know it's really hard, it's not so hard to read on the screen. So this is what we actually published back in February. So this is the published budget, the initial budget and what our board has approved so far. Our fund balance here, of our fund balance, we do have committed funds within our fund balance which reflect almost 6 million, 5.7 million dollars. And most of the, the dollars in that fund balance that are committed are for our future debt payment. So we're in a position right now where our debt is the interest rate on the debt. We received a very good interest rate. And now, as everybody is probably experiencing, our cash in the bank is receiving higher interest rates than our debt. So it didn't make sense to pay off that existing debt. Although we have it committed to pay off, we would rather be good stewards of the funds and, and generate more interest at this point than to pay off the debt. So.
Better for capital projects?
It's for, yes, yes. Yeah.
Just the debt?
Yes, I think we have about.
Three million, I believe, Mackenzie.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. We do also have a self-insurance health fund. And so we do have 3.6 million dollars reserved in our fund balance for that self-insurance fund. The other committed funds are also related to projects, capital projects that we had planned on the horizon. So that makes up a lot of our fund balance and the increase in our fund balance that, that we've experienced over the past couple of years.
One thing I would, I would mention to that too is, you know, during some of the times of uncertainty, the board made a decision pretty early to offer contracts to all, all employees. So when we, we go forward, we certainly see our position to allow us to learn over this next year and even the following year where we believe that we will not hopefully get a lot of the schools. But we know that the thought of giving 100% of media and ed service is maybe not realistic. So we certainly feel like we're going to have some time to figure this out because of where we're setting financially going, going forward. And then those, that fund balance will, in fiscal year 26, it could go down dramatically depending on how many schools decide to come on, onboard with us. Now certainly if we are able to see more schools deciding to stay, then we will ramp up hiring. I think our biggest challenge right now, and maybe it was mentioned earlier, is losing the employees. But we just, we would like to fill many of those positions. In fact, all of those in special ed, we would fill those if we could. We just are not having much luck getting people to apply for positions right now. So we think after we get past this year and we kind of settle down and we figure it out, we get more people to, to look at the system. But I think the biggest challenge with the system right now is with the number of people that you have retirement and resignation, just trying to fill those positions right now is rather difficult. So that could, you know, be a little unique with the, with the expenditures this, this next year too, because of not being able to fill those positions. And I think in special ed, we've said we would fill all of them if we could. We have not had as, as many resignations in ed serve as some AEA. So I think we are still at 85% of our staff in ed serve. So we, we hope to be able to provide a lot of the services that we've done in the past close for next year as we try to figure out this, this new funding structure.
You, you had mentioned, I believe, that there's some deferred capital projects back in proposed expenditures by function. Was that right? If I understand that correctly.
We had budgeted for some capital projects that, that I removed from the budget for next year.
Just bringing it up to the, the historical fund balance slide, are there any funds dedicated to those deferred?
Yeah.
Removed that are in there?
They're, they are still committed fund because this fund balance reflects as of, I'm referring to as of July.
Will those be coming back online? Will those be coming back online would be your expectation?
Likely, yes.
All right.
And that's a board action that we.
Got it.
Yes.
What are the deferred capital projects?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, what are the deferred capital projects?
Yes. There's some technology updates that were planned, an HVAC replacement system, which is a large one, that's $400,000 cap, some carpet replacement, Cedar Falls needs a new roof. River Hills also, that consortium has been saving money over the past couple of years in anticipation of redoing their parking lot. So that is something that will, you know, those are funds that's part of that consortium that does need to remain in that committed status because those are consortium funds. But the bulk of the committed funds are, you know, for the lease purchase agreement and to pay off that debt. So.
Cedar, Cedar.
Yes, right.
And will you go back to the map of the facilities?
Sure.
And how many total facilities are there?
You know, this is one that I think in, in some ways that, I'll answer your question three, but we're, we're proud of that. When you look at 18 counties, there were a number of buildings, you know, prior to myself, were closed. The Marshalltown one, I believe, was a school, Marshalltown Community School allowed us to, to use. The Clear Lake is right on the airport, Mason City Clear Lake. I think that was an original building that was built by the, the agency. Those are both paid for. So yeah, three, we, we don't have any other classrooms or anything within that 18 county region. Yeah.
Further questions?
That was Central Rivers has a nice size on a spine balance. Close, which gives you that flexibility and inclusion and unknowns. So that was. When we talked with Harlan, there's a lot of still unknowns. And we talked about approving the proposed budget that we have in front of us for your, for your organization. And knowing that what we approve will be tweaked between now and whenever.
And we would say, just to that point, that we, we would have certainly recognized that our fund balance was with none of these changes. We were getting to the point where we needed to bring that down through some different reasons. So I think because of the changes in the structure, that fund balance will in a lot of ways probably take care of itself. But we are going to have, we, we use the term runway. Hopefully we have a longer runway to figure out some of the changes, work with the department on those changes. And, you know, at the time, we needed to start looking at that. But in, in some ways now it's going to give us some flexibility to, to keep some services that we didn't have to do any reductions in force or anything like that. So.
Do you have anything else to present or ready for a few questions?
Yes, yes.
Questions from the board?
Well, I'm probably going to ask this to every group today, but given initial published budget and now the changes that have been wrought by the new law and your work in bringing this updated budget to us. Are you believe that you're addressing all the key things you need to address for your AEA?
We do, we do. And like Joel said, having that runway, the, the flexibility there and having the fund balance is allowing us to make more thoughtful decisions going forward as well. But yes, I, I do, I do think that we've addressed everything that we know of, that we can.
The media program where you can fund special ed deficits?
Yes.
You've been funding any special ed deficits in recent years from that?
Yeah. I mean, I, I just, I haven't been through a year end, but I do think there are, there's opportunity because media, our fund balance in media is, is capable to help that. But I'm not really.
I don't think we have, but I think we've intertwined those, those dollars to help some of the other, other areas. But I don't think we've done any, any deficits. Yeah.
Are those dollars available because your local school districts were not using your media services as much as you had anticipated?
Well, I think that is something that we see throughout all of the AEA's. Their media dollars, we, we do spend a lot of media dollars for our local districts on a lot of the technology piece of things. But we have seen media dollars grow over the past few years as well too. Because, and I, I'm not sure if that's necessarily all because of districts not using it or exactly what the.
And I think, I really appreciate that question. I think one of the things too that we're really trying to get people to understand is I think that when we hear media, we tend to hear books and, and those things. But we do a lot with creative services and communication and also in the area of media covers when we have to get a wheelchair to a certain student. So some of those media funds are spent, you know, in lots of different ways. And so they are spread out in different ways that might not be spending them necessarily on books per se or something like that. So I don't know if that, if that helps or not. So.
And what percentage of your local districts are using your education, your special education services?
What percent? I would say a hundred percent. Yeah. And I would say right now we're seeing the majority of our smaller schools opt in totally. I think that the, the thing to keep in mind that if you look at from a funding standpoint of the 40, 60%, if you take the four large school districts in Central Rivers, Mason City, Marshalltown, Cedar Falls and Marleau, and then you add Waverly, which is quite a bit smaller, that's about 54% of the funding comes from those five, five schools. So you can see in a year, if there is changes on how they opt in and opt out, you're going to have some, some decisions to make going from that standpoint. So I think that's, that could change the media and the ed serve budget dramatically depending on what those, those larger schools do.
So I heard maybe when you walked in the room that, that you have a new position starting?
Yes.
Okay. So what's the plan for your succession?
Yeah. So the board has already approved the Keystone Chief Administrator, who you'll meet later on. And we're already working closely. I think there was a lot of positive, I think that was a positive because he's been in the room. He's already working with Director Snow. I think he, I think it just makes a lot of sense. And also I think it wouldn't have necessarily made a lot of sense for us to talk about expenditure reduction and all that to bring in a brand new chief at that time. So Stan was willing to do that. The board was, was happy with that. And it allows our two cabinets to come together and probably share and do things differently from two AEA's than if he wasn't in that chair. So I think he, he understands the resources. He's learning about Central Rivers and hopefully we can do more things that become, you know, maybe we try some things that can become a model across the state too. So.
Was the new legislation, the emphasis, there are more sharing agreements between these two AEA's?
Yeah, we, we had really started talking about the, even last fall about that one. But certainly from an, from an administrative expenditure standpoint and lowering that, it just made a lot of sense. We also did that to try to make sure that we free up money that stays closest to the, to the kids too. So that I think was really why we would do that. So i- if we're shared, it may allow us to have two positions that stay an SOP and a special ed consultant. So I think it was, it was done for lots of reasons. And we also thought it was something that we wanted to show that to the legislators too, that were asking us to do that. So I think it just made sense for us to do that when people are leaving and not having to, you know, let people go or anything like that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Are a lot of other AEA's doing what you guys are doing and kind of sharing? Or are you, is this something that's kind of new or, I mean?
Yeah. I mean, I think we've, we've certainly ramped it up quickly between our two AEA's. But when Chief Decker resigned at Mississippi Ben, so Jennifer has two different chiefs that she's, she's working with. You can ask her privately how that goes. But then I think you're also here from Great Prairie AEA and Grant Wood AEA that they're sharing. I think you could also see other things that are happening. So that might be a good question to ask the other, the other chiefs. But I think we're seeing more of that, certainly when people retire from that standpoint. Cause really, I, I think that's something that it, it just, it makes sense in lots of ways as we try to figure out this new, new look. And the more we can keep the dollars closest to the kids, I think is, is the best thing to do. Thanks for that question.
I'm always intrigued by the goals of the AEA's.
Yep.
And how you, how do you measure progress towards those goals? Since a lot of your work is dependent on the individual districts, right?
Yeah. You, you know, I'm, I'm going to answer this and all my colleagues are watching me on the screen and like, Joel, how are you going to answer this one? Right? You know, this is Joel a little bit in his, in his first year. I, I think that that's a question that is something that we continue to need to improve on. I think that oftentimes the same discussion is about, we aren't necessarily teaching the students. And so when you look at some of that student achievement, now we own it and we want to be a part of that improvement. We, I, I think just to be honest with you, I think that's something that we, we have different ways of doing that. But I think that's something that we need to continue to, to show and get better at that because I think that would have been a part of some of the discussions that we could have had during the, during the session. So I don't know if that's a great question. And there might be someone, you know, this is where, you know, there might be another chief that could answer that a little bit better. But I think it's an area that we can continue to improve on going forward.
Other questions for the Central Rivers team?
I, I would just add to that question too. The, the one area that we certainly, I think it's every couple of years, we ask our clients exactly how they feel about our services in the three areas. Those tend to come back pretty high in, in that area. So we do have a, a survey mechanism that allows us to get feedback from our, from our clients too. So I wanted to make sure I said that.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed budget found in 5.82 Central Rivers. By Cass?
Second.
Second by Nathan. Any particular discussion? During, those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oh, same sign. Motion's for.
Appreciate your service. Thank you.
We're going to take the 10 minute break. So about 1:32 issue.
All your opinion is two minutes behind.
Morning, Mr. John Spear. Go ahead and get ready while we're doing this little break. All you have to do is just look out for that pop up on Zoom to accept the panelist invite. I can send it again to you if it went away. Okay. Excellent.
All right, we have Grant Wood here.
Good morning.
All right.
Good morning.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm John Spear, Chief Administrator, Grant Wood AEA. I'm also the interim chair chief of Mississippi Bend and the Springs. So we got the pleasure of doing this second time after lunch. Meet today.
I'm Barb Palms. I'm the director of this district at Grant Wood.
Like Central Rivers, we will try not to be redundant, especially in the things that's sort of a universal around the AEA's. We'll try to pinpoint maybe some things about Grant Wood and then we'll dive right into the financial part of it. But executive overview, first, I just want to say it's nice to see, once you've done things for five or six years, you see, see faces at the table, especially my regional colleagues here in the Grant Wood AEA area. Thank you for, for serving. Boards are not always sought after positions and they're sometimes difficult. So I always thank all boards for serving. Grant Wood AEA, we've always tried to be a, a regional organization that keeps students, families and districts at part of what we do in our decision, decision making and trying to make decisions that keep services closest to students. We're very proud that we have a plan on a page and you see it has our core values, our goals. It has priority areas. We actually have managerial qualitative and quantitative data. So I might hearken back to maybe Joel's question previously. And so there is some data there that just you can peruse on your own, just give you a flavor of the type of data that we, we collect at Grant Wood AEA. And I believe all AEA's are getting better in that area with our desk audit, obviously all tried to provide impact data as well. And so we're working on that as a system. Grant Wood AEA by the numbers, we, we serve a seven county area. We're, we're one of the few AEA's that actually serves the same footprint of the original community college model. So our footprint is the same as Kirkwood Community College. We serve 32 public schools, 15 state accredited non-public schools and 10 independent accredited non-public schools. We serve around 74,000 students, just under 6,000 teachers, 250 school administrators. And our Grant Wood staff is about 521, give or take a few on any, any given month or, or moment. So gives you a little look at Grant Wood AEA by the numbers and, and within our region. You know, this is, a lot of this is typical, which we've tried to show there is much commonality amongst the AEA's. We work hard to be a system and to provide consistent, effective, efficient and equitable services across the state. But we all have some things that are different. And I think that's a good model because districts in certain regions may have different needs. I'll pull out just a couple of the differences at, at Grant Wood AEA. One that we're very proud of, it's been going on, I'm going to say at least 20 years, is college for kids. It's for tag or, or ELP students. It's a summer opportunity for, we partner with Co College, they provide the setting. And we provide advanced opportunities for tag kids. They qualify for that. They come in in a one or two week setting, a couple of opportunities throughout the summer to have courses that they may not have an opportunity to enter homeschool during the school year. It's incredibly popular program and we're proud that we can offer that service to that, that targeted group of students. FOS kits, our VAS center. Practically every elementary school in our AEA uses FOS kits for their lab work. So we purchase the FOS kits, we send them to schools, they use them, they send them back, we refurbish them. And then we send them back out to the next school. We save districts hundreds of thousands of dollars in the process by doing that. We've partnered with a couple of other AEA's in that area. And so those would just be a couple of the uniquenesses of, of Grant Wood AEA. From Iowa, yes.
Previous slide please.
Yes.
Technology, media, the student information, is that the power school?
It is. So another, another thing Grant Wood has been in for a long time. If in most schools in Iowa, I should say many schools in Iowa, if you're a power school or an infinite campus school and you call for IT help, the help desk, most of them are actually calling Grant Wood AEA. We have a pod of schools who, a pod of staff who actually help districts through power school and infinite campus. I don't know the districts necessarily know when they're calling a help desk, it goes to Grant Wood AEA. But yes, we do that. We also provide hands-on IT support for about 26 districts. So if a teacher or student needs a, and can't get into this or my computer's not working, person doing that fix or that, that work with the student or staff is actually Grant Wood employee.
Now falls with you. Our schools support.
And both are fee for.
It was marvelous.
Both are fee for service because it's not the typical everyday thing that all districts, all districts use.
We were happy to tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always like to say Grant Wood's structure, we're probably structured similarly to a large 3A, small 4A school. You know, the board, the chief, who I equate to superintendent, the cabinet, who would be central office staff. And then field staff are, are equated more to like principals. They work on a daily basis in, you know, anywhere from one to four or five schools, depending on the region and size. I can say at this point, we will attrition probably at least 10% of our administrative staff for the 24, 25 school year. That does not include sharing agreements that we either have or are pursuing. Our likely partners are Mississippi Bend and Great Prairie. So we're actively talking amongst ourselves about what sharing opportunities might unfold. So I can't tell you specifically, but I can guarantee you that we will have shared administrative staff between one or, or more of us in the 24, 5 school year. So it's an opportunity to be more efficient. Certified staff summary, I, I said our number's 521. That would give you an idea of how that would be broken down by, by large category, area. Just to give you an idea of what the staff looks like, other than, rather than just one large number. And then staffing detail would break that down even more clearly. I would open it up to be really small numbers in, in words. So you're probably better off on your own screen or, or with a paper copy. So in general, that would be an overview of Grant Wood AEA. And Barb will dive into more of the finances for us.
Yeah, the next screen is just shows our service area. So we have 32 districts that are divided up into five regions. So you can see the different colors. We have three facilities that serve those regions. So most of our northern districts are served by our facility in Cedar Rapids. Then we have a facility in Coralville that serves the southern half of our area. And then our 33rd Avenue facility does have some conference room space for professional development classes. But it also is our main facility that supports our VAS science kit district center. So. Capital assets, we mentioned the buildings. The only thing of unique for us about our vehicles is we actually have two mobile hearing testing bands that we use that do mobile hearing testing at our schools. The published budget for fiscal year '25, this has already been touched on, but obviously this was what was published in January. So I'm not going to spend much time on these next couple of slides because we have revised those based on the House file that was passed. So we'll skip over expenditures, fund balance, and then this is just our three-year published budget.
The historical fund balance.
Yep. So.
Information that we have. I know that the numbers are in flash yet. Projected with this stock in the bill, there's kind of your fund balance by about $8 million.
Well, what that doesn't show, and I, I think others have alluded to it. So we're, we're now working, all of us with our districts to determine kind of priority service areas. And we're not quite to the point where we can definitively say what the number is. But we, we feel pretty good that of the 60% of EdServe and Media dollars that go to the districts, we're using a number of about 50% that we'll receive back for services. And that's through conversations with our districts. We're continuing to have individual conversations with them and may target that. So what it really doesn't show would be, I think, an increased balance in, in media tech of a $3 million. And it also doesn't show attrition of staff. Like the other AEA's have alluded to, right now we have open positions. It would not surprise me if we wouldn't fill 30-ish positions next year. And so that would be about a $3 million-ish number on decreased expenses. So I think that's why the number that, when you just put the numbers together, kind of on your compilation sheet, it's probably true with that information, but when you calculate those in, we believe will be much better than the $1.8 million that the compiled sheet shows.
You know, obviously the trends have been going downward. So it's just kind of a cautionary.
Right. And part of that was intentional. The fiscal years '21 and '22, the fund balances went up primarily because of those COVID ARP funds that the AEA's received. And so part of it was we're, we've been intentionally overspending our budget to fund, to spend those dollars down. We've also had some capital projects that we've had to plan for the last couple of years. So some of those drops are because of capital projects. And again, this slide in particular is the original published numbers. So things have changed a little bit since, and we'll see that later in the presentation.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. So then let's go ahead to the next one. So this is where we've now updated the numbers for the 2.5% SSA and the cut in the media and Ed Services and Professional Development funding. Again, these numbers still don't reflect the final cut that was made just at the end of legislative session. But here's kind of a side by side comparison of the revenues. So obviously the media and Ed Services cut is reflected in line one. The state aid is a fairly similar number because it just went up by the 2.5% SSA. And then the teacher quality professional development money comes out of other state revenues. So.
This also would be one of the columns that would be impacted by increased revenue for the fee for service of, of the portion of the 60% that we believe will get back for services to districts.
Yep. And that state aid number again now is still overstated because our share of the final cut that was made at the end of the legislative session is about 3.5 million. So we'll have 3.5 million left in that state or less in that state aid number. On the expenditure slide, we did also remove a couple of capital expenditure projects that we were planning on doing. So you see that facilities acquisition and construction line has been zeroed out. And I will just point out on, for our expenditures, those first three lines, instructions, student support services and district staff support services, that accounts for 78% of our expenditures. So that's where the bulk of our, our dollars are spent.
This would also be a number that wouldn't reflect any of the administrative savings I've talked about, future administrative savings or staff savings that we will see in the 24, 25 years. So this would be another area that, that you'd see a different number when it's put into practice.
So then here's the fund balance after House File 2612. And so we are showing our total fund balance dropping to about 5.3 million based on not adjusting our expenditures. And so that's about a 7.8% balance.
And Barb had said that we had kind of planned, and that was, that would be around the numbers. An agency we planned to hopefully to carry forward. We worked our number down to be in that seven to 10% range. It would be definitely in ISV's range for healthy financial solvency for educational institution.
The danger with all the budgets is when you, or projects sooner or later, they be coming forward. Kind of your point, wasn't it, Brian?
Yep.
Commit your budget to ongoing expenditures, such as salaries and benefits. And sometimes those projects get delayed more than they need to be. So go ahead.
So yeah, then we just have our line item budget attached. And so we'd be happy to answer further questions. So I, I would like you to elaborate a little bit more on the question that I did present to Joel. On measuring this.
Yep.
More so than I'd seen in the other.
We worked really hard, honestly, and the other AEA's have as well. So our plan on a page, as we call it, would not be totally Grant Wood. It then would have a similar document. But we've also worked really hard to look at our priority areas and then put qualitative and quantitative data to it. And Mary, you kind of said it is a little scary. We actually teach probably about 135 kids out of the 74,000. So when you don't control the absolute instruction, it's a little scary to use, for example, ICE ASP data. But our, our philosophy as an agency has been. But our our philosophy as an agency has been if you do the right things in the right way and you help districts try to implement that with fidelity, we believe there will be an impact in student scores. Um, so uh we we don't, we have not yet launched a a data dashboard. It's created. So every one of our priority areas actually has at least one data point. Uh, we just haven't launched that that dashboard yet that goes with the plan on the page. That would be kind of be the final step uh of what we've produced here. And again, this is not not unique to Grantwood A E A. Other agencies would have this as well. But we've worked really hard to try to try to find impact data uh for our priority areas.
And I appreciate the challenge. Don't don't misunderstand the question off. Um, but it's always to your advantage to demonstrate, right, your effectiveness more specifically. And so let's talk a little bit more about your uh shared services Mississippi Bend.
Correct.
And how, when did you start that? And to what degree are you anticipating to increase those shares?
Started that February 1st. Um, both boards will begin a discussion of what next year looks like. I think I can say definitively, no matter what model Mississippi Bend uses, they'll save an administrator one way or the other. I mean, there are a couple of options you could probably pick. You could have, again, a shared chief, or you could have an interim uh cabinet member service their chief as well. So uh we'll talk to both boards about which option is the most viable. Um, so I can guarantee you there'll be a saved administrative position in whichever model. Great Prairie and Grant Wood have just begun discussions, you know, uh on a on a more formal basis. Um, I will, I think you will see a number of cabinet members shared between the two agencies. Um, we're also trying to support each other. Um, are there areas where maybe, you know, I'll give you an example, deaf and hard of hearing and audiologist services, those are very difficult to find. So you may see us tipping over the border with with Great Prairie as an example, and there are some things that Great Prairie may help us with. Um, so I'm I'm confident, other than the 10%, we've already talked about of attrition, you'll see a number of shared administrative positions between the two or three agencies. That's kind of our pot. They're our likely geographic partners.
Do you think that has any impact on the services that are?
I think it's, I think it's too early to tell. I mean, the 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 goal of that is to cut things that are further away from kids. Um, we all know the most impactful thing for students is people who actually work with them and teachers. The second most impactful thing is quality leadership. Um, so I think it will have to sort of uh, I think, ascertain maybe over a number of years, sort of are there both positive consequences for sure, but are there negative unintended consequences?
This is sort of piggybacking on Mary's question, but um in in an effort to find efficiencies and, you know, overlap services with other uh areas. Is there a point, or you may not know at this point, you may have answered this already, is there a point at which you kind of reach a point of diminishing returns and you say like, we can do it, yes, but it's not ideal and and we're not serving as good as we can, although several steps above perhaps in the legislature someplace else, it looks like you're doing just fine and right, maybe we could cut you some more, you know, or something like that.
Um, I I think to generalize that question, um, there there would be some services that we're going to look to try to be more efficient. And let's say we have nine of those services now. Uh, it might, it might be one thing. One might sound better, but it actually costs more to do one rather than four. You know, um, Amazon doesn't have one delivery point in Iowa. You know, they have regional um warehouses so they can get the services to you that you need in a personalized way in a quicker manner. And so they've chosen not to do one large warehouse with several. We can be more efficient, and it it will be for the system to gauge what's the right number and what hits the efficiency without diminishing services, you know, to kids and schools. Thank you.
Our part of the media budget can be each for covering special ed deficits. Is that something that?
Yes, at Grant Wood, we have not um typically used media or ed services dollars to supplement special ed. There is certainly overlap in those services and with some of our staff, but we have not run a special ed deficit that we need to cover with those balances.
Probably a good example where they're integrated would be assistive technology. For us, that's not, that doesn't come from special ed. It comes from our media department. So if a student needs a communicative device, that would be an integrated approach between special ed that actually would come from our our media tech services.
Those assistive devices are very inexpensive.
Yeah, yes, right. We, the districts wish they were inexpensive, and we wish they were inexpensive. But I mean, it's the most critical thing for some students to be able to access, you know, materials.
Well, and the efficiency part of the A E A system is we could buy those expensive items if they need to try it out with the student and see if it's going to work before maybe a district would then need to purchase it or a family even would need to purchase it. So we have that ability to let them try out different solutions.
Are your um unique program offering, um, did you tap into any of your funding sources to provide those services? Or they are all fee-for?
We, they're they're almost all fee-for-servants, and I just use that to qualify it. And we do try to run them at close to a breakeven as we can. Now, in the future, we'll run them completely at, you know, as a as a business model. You know, we'll we'll run them as breakeven plus, you know, we we have, we'll have to do that now. Uh, but we try to, we try to come close to that currently.
On the updated budget from the published one in 6.1.2, estimated ending fund balance, 1.8 million and change, is that right?
No, I mean, again, because of some decreased expenditures and increased income.
Okay, what you were talking about before.
Yeah, we we believe that probably could be between five and seven million. There are a couple of slides, but that that would kind of equate to that. That doesn't capture those um alterations that we're feeling moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, I had a note, maybe that could be eight million or something you said before. You just don't know?
We don't know yet until we really uh, we'll need more information from our districts. Uh, we have other meetings.
But if it was this number, that would be too low.
Correct. We would not want it to be 1.8 million.
Be in the danger zone if it was. Are there questions for team from Grantwood?
So the, your board is meeting maybe in 10 days or something like that?
Yeah, both both boards will probably use the month of May to figure out what the the model looks like. For for at least the chief position, we're not going to be ready by the beginning of May with shared positions with Great Prairie. Those discussions, you know, are kind of.
No, I understand that, but just based on like this, the 6.1.2 stuff. Oh, you might not have it labeled like that.
Yeah.
The proposed, the updated budget. That's what I'm talking about. Your board probably knows about that. It is dotted on it. Yeah.
Yeah, but we can certainly take, see, and and now this isn't even the most current information. So should we now update it, you know, based on the final cut and based on the staffing that we think we're going to have in place?
So maybe a, maybe a June thing for us, because we'd like to know a little bit more about the revenue we're going to receive from districts and the expenses that will attrition.
Where are your local districts on passing their budget? Have they finalized?
Uh, they have to, like us, they're about a month later, but they.
April 15th, they have to certify to the county, and then I think they get finalized by April 30th.
Okay.
So so could I ask Cassandra a question?
Sure.
Cassandra, um, I, so are you um, and I'm not picking on you, the recommendation to us is to approve this one. And you obviously know about everything we were just talking about. Are you comfortable with the explanation for the ending balance and the changes, given the timeframes?
Yeah, and and this is a challenge that I believe all the A E As have to do every year as they wait for that final appropriations bill to approve. So.
It's just that this one's kind of skinny.
It is kind of.
Not that I know what C P means.
We would defer to local boards to to um say what they would expect that ending fund balance to be. We do that for A E As, we do that for school boards as well. We believe they know best about what we're looking for, what that local landscape looks like. And and I I think they've done um a decent job illustrating that they understand the challenges that are ahead of them that need to be addressed and that they're up to addressing those challenges. And it sounds like they're being proactive about it, so they already have the um needs and with their local districts to figure out more about what they can plan for to um then make decisions about what additional actions if any need to occur uh in order to sufficiently plan for next year.
Are you looking for a motion to approve?
Yes, uh, in accordance with the document 6.1.2, exactly the summary.
Make that.
Moved by Mary.
Second.
Second by Brooke. Need further discussion? Mary, if you can, if you can indicate by saying aye.
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 Follow the same sign. Motion's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, that's great, Mary. Welcome, Laura Jurs.
Thanks for having us. I'm Nathan Wood, Chief Administrator, Great Prairie A E A, just a month, 10, may wrap up my first year. I transitioned this role as I've been at the A E A for several years in different capacities. Dennis, introduce yourself.
Dennis Gorley, uh, Chief Financial Officer for Great Prairie A E A, been there uh 25 years. Nathan's better with uh Zoom than I am.
So again, like several of the chief administrators have said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fly through a couple of the slides that are really overview. I'll talk a little bit about the specific things that are specific to Great Prairie and some of the impactful things that we have going on for the last couple of years that I can relate to back when Dr. Yelich was at the agency and then in this year of transition from me. First of all, we serve the 32 um districts in Southeast Iowa, primarily rural districts, uh with our largest district being Atumwa in Burlington of approximately 4,000 students. Um, our smallest district, about 180 students at Moulton Udel. We have our agency broken into five or six regions, uh which are all have district-based teams. Uh, we've integrated a model where special education services, media services, and educational services staff work together through teams under a primary supervisor. So that really intentionally works since Dr. Yelich's time there and in this year. We're trying to eliminate any silos across those funding streams and staff working to general education through special ed services. We have four offices. We have three satellite offices in Albia, Burlington, and Fairfield. Um, and then uh we cover about 6,300 miles of geographic of geographic area. And then our main office is in Atumwa, uh where we host um the primary focus or the primary number of our staff and where our H R, business, and executives are are held. Three primary goals. So just this fall, in my first year, we engaged in a strategic planning process and we and we rewrote our goals. Um, and the one that I'm going to highlight today is decreasing the achievement gap between all students. And I really feel like in this new model, that's going to be the primary focus of our work. Uh, so we are are still holding weight in those first two of of increasing um achievement for all students or success for all kids from birth to 21, but our primary focus on reducing that achievement gap and then also working with educators to increase their capacity. So those are our three primary goals, very surface level, 10,000-foot view. And then you get into the 10,000 different things that our staff do on a daily basis. And I'll highlight two successes here that we've we've really found. We've used impact data over the last couple of years. Uh, when Dr. Yelich was there, we started a language and literacy pilot, and then we've continued that. And really what that has done is taken the primary work of our general education literacy specialist and partnering them with special education speech language pathologists that worked on the whole, on language as a whole child. And we've seen some extreme growth, both and and positive feedback at the administrator level, the teacher level, and then also seen some student growth level. The other thing that I'm going to talk about is a wildly important goals. Uh, this is, this comes from a Lachoni um um book around, um, if you focus on things that are intentional, you can see um small growth, growth, group growth development, and then you focus that into and expand that across your agency. It's kind of the the ripple effect. If you throw a stone in the water and you see it grow. We started this project last year and we expanded it this year. It's really been a way for us to take data at the at the student level and and be able to work with, expand to classroom teachers, to grade levels, to school buildings, and at the district level on how student achievement can be um be improved in their district. So those are two things. There's a Q R code in there. If you take a look at that Q R code, it will take you into the specifics and show you some of the data that's of the work that our staff and our leaders have done in that wildly important goal work. Just by the numbers here, 32 districts, public school districts, nine accredited non-publics. I mentioned earlier, we have about 35,000 students, 3,000 educators and administrators, about 6,300 square miles. And our staff is right at uh for the 23, 24 year, 250 certified and classified administrative staff all total. This is the same slide that you've probably seen uh from a couple of the different agencies. Highlighted in red are those specific services that I already mentioned that are, we believe are specific to Great Prairie. But if there are questions about any of those, one other thing I'll mention is when we um off-boarded in my year last year, uh as Dr. Yelich's H R coordinator and assistant administrator, we onboarded or off took off the ground a new superintendent network with anticipation of some turnover. This year, we have 27 superintendents in our agency. Nine of them are new superintendents. So we have, we've really taken um resources from the department in terms of simple things like due dates and really taking it down and brought in some of our our staff members and worked with our director of professional learning on how do they um integrate into that new role of superintendent. Uh, it was just a big lift for our for our leadership and our agency to go from a veteran group with nine now, nine new superintendents. So just another small thing that is we've found um successful.
Can you share a little bit about the correctional facility teachers?
Yes. Yep, so we we serve, uh, we provide a teacher for students that are um under that age 21 who are eligible for services and and want those services at the correctional facility in Fort Madison. So we provide a teacher. Um, it's a unique situation. So when you walk to the door, you can't take anything with you in the door. So that staff member um uses a computer at home to prep or at work when they're outside the facility. And then they have a machine that they use that's transferred through network uh that's under lock and key when they're in the building. So uh they, we find, and I I attended a a observation there this year, just because I'd never been to the facility. I was amazed, the students that want services really want services, like they're there for because they want to get their education. So I think the the perception or the judgment may be made that that would be a really difficult job with maybe behaviors. And that's the complete opposite. The students that want services really find that they are engaged and and uh want to become educated.
Approximately how many students?
So I think that's a good question. That at the beginning of the year, we had up to nine, and we've had as low as two. And and part of the fluctuation in that is sometimes students are, or students are not able to receive education because of a discipline action within the, within the facility. So they may be um unable to come to a class for 30 days, 60 days, uh depend on that. And then if they fluctuate now, we have had some students who have denied services and then pick services back up. I think it really just comes back to as a, at the age of majority, they can make those undecision, their own decisions on whether they want those services or not. So we provide one teacher uh that's split between the present facility and our four-plus program at the community college at um at C C in Burlington.
Thank you.
Yep. Get there. Organizational structure, a little bit different. I tried to simplify this to show, uh, we have a six-person administrative team this year at the executive level. Um, in full transparency, that's going to look a lot different next year. Um, we have a retirement, um, and then a couple other vacant, uh, couple of resignations. So that team is going to shrink from um from six down to four. Um, last year, when Doc, when Dr. Yelich left and I transitioned to this role, I picked, I retained the uh title of H R Director. So I serve in that dual capacity. Uh, but next year, our executive leadership team will go from six uh down to a three. And as as John talked about, and you've heard several of the chief administrators talking about, we're engaging in conversations now uh with other administrator or other agencies and with our board on what those potential share. It's good though. Last slide, all I have, and then I'll turn it over to Dennis to talk a little about the finance side. So I mentioned earlier, we're right at 250 staff. We have a head count of 254. Last slide all I have, and then I'll turn it over to Dennis to talk a little about the finance side. So I mentioned earlier, right at two hundred and fifty staff, we have a head count of two fifty-four. Uh, with two forty-nine point three six is our total FTE. About eighty percent of our staff are certified and, and certified staff. Um, and then again, we have. About thirty-nine classified staff, um, eight admin supports, so it would be office staff potentially helping with. Um, administrators also doing some um, compliance work in terms of general supervision and data entry. Along with our IT, HR, Business Office supports. And then the six executive administrators. And then six regional middle managers. Um, and so we have total twelve administrators this year. And as I mentioned, we'll look at reducing that number will be between six and seven next year. Depending on what we put together for sharing agreements. Dennis is gonna talk a little about such as some history, um, historical information on staff and FTE count.
Great Prairie AA came about by the merger of uh, Great River Eight Sixteen and Southern Prairie AA Fifteen. July first, two thousand and seven. At that point in time, there were three hundred and eight FTE for between the two. AAs. Uh, what we've done over the years is we shrink the, try to shrink the. Non-student or the furthest away from the students. And keep the ones that are serving the students at the same level or increasing that level. That's why they're certified, then the photo and Pitas has actually increased over the years and we've reduced the other. Uh, departments and positions. Special Ed, of course, is our largest division, has the most employees, a hundred and eighty-five. Media and Ed Services are next. And then Special Ed Instruction is the STEP program, the RICE program. Uh, it's the five-year programs that we hold at Southeastern and Indian Hills. Uh, the Juvenile Home uh, Program. We have the um, Juvenile Shelter there in Atumwa. And then we have the Detention Center in Montrose. So that's what, where those come from. There is a personal budget detail that was supplied earlier, telling him what staff we have and how they're funded and everything. Uh, capital assets.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about this earlier. So this is, we just kinda put together, uh, first Cassandra's request, just a, a list of our capital assets. So those four physical buildings. Uh, we do have a few um, vehicles we use for delivery and maintenance of facilities. And then it goes into the detail of, we do maintain a print shop. Um, where we provides internal copying and also copies for school districts, some print for school districts. And then our media, our physical library, that includes some of the several things that you've heard the other um, agencies talk about, along with our IT and. And infrastructure support.
The next slide, uh, this was what we published, our budget. There back in January, we had put it in the papers and hold our public hearing and submit it to the Department of Ed by February tenth. Uh, and I, I'm sorry, I missed Kurt's presentation. Uh, the certified budget process for the AAs are the same as the LEAs, the local school districts. In that what it does is sets your spending caps, it notifies the public of what you're spending and the history and everything. Um, and so we did that budget, submitted it, and then we were asked to redo that. And we'll have that slide here in a little bit. But uh, like other AAs, we're the same uh, on our taxes, other local revenues run about the same. Uh, that's our classes, our uh, sharing arrangements. We have uh, our print shops of our printing that we do for the local school districts there. Uh, and we also have a cooperative fund, a co-op fund that uh. May get started back up again. It's been pretty dormant for the last few years, but what it does is it allows us to. Purchase things on a cooperative basis and then resell them to the school districts. So we'll probably start that. Uh, fund back up again. Uh, state aid, of course, uh, other state revenues, same as the others. Uh, teacher salary supplement. At that time, we did have TQ, but. Uh, then the federal grants, the IDEA grants. Other federal revenues would be uh, every student succeeds act, ESSA, and the English Language Learner Program. Uh, other financing sources, that's just uh, transfers in between funds.
So federal, federal money funds about a third of your budget?
Yes, sir.
And that's not changing?
Uh, just slightly. The parent ed, uh, the family educator partnership program was eliminated. And so that's about, runs about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for us. So there will be a slight drop in the IDEA grants through the last, the screen where we redid the revenues.
Okay, thank you.
And that, um, that's leveraging the partnership with the Ask Resource Center um, for those family support specialists. Do you also receive um, uh, title funds for uh, um, it's termed neglected and delinquent?
Yes, we do.
And that, and that supports um, those critical uh, juvenile justice educational services, correct?
That's for the Juvenile Shelter Program and the Detention Center. It's where those funds go.
Thank you.
Before I go?
Thanks for having me, Jonathan.
Your last shot ahead before I went to the next one. Uh, proposed expenditures by function, uh, were the same as uh, the other AAs on how we code our stuff and same school districts. It's a. Uniform Financial Accounting Manual, according to. The Department of Ed, whenever it came about and the federal government, I guess. So uh, bulk of our services now. Uh, we do had, we had in there because. Uh, for twenty-five years, the, we've been cut by the legislature at the last minute. And there were all the rumors about what we were going to get cut. So we do have uh, some bump ups for that here in our. Uh, Student Support Services and Staff Support Services. We've been cut forty-three million dollars over my twenty-five years and to not sit there. And include something for that in our budget, I don't think is very financially responsible. So that's how I do it. So any questions on?
Say that again.
Well, we've been cut forty-three million in my twenty-five years. And to not include that in our budget. Uh, I don't think is very financially responsible. And so I account for. My best guess of what the cut's gonna be here in our expenditures. Because when we do our budget, we. By law, have to set our budget at what the law is at that point in times. And all that's on the books at that point in time is a permanent seven and a half million dollar cut. Now, over the years, we've been cut anywhere up to, last year was twenty-one, another twenty-one million. And so our share of that's two million dollars. So I count for that because otherwise if I just let those monies come in the revenue side. Expenditure side, cause we're not gonna get that money. Then our fund balance is gonna jump up by a couple million dollars and it's not gonna, that's not gonna happen.
Right. And so you're deducting it on both ends of the ledger, both revenues and expenditures, both?
Yes, sir.
So this, this harkens back to the standing seven point five um, that, that Hartland mentioned, I think dating back to two thousand and two?
Two thousand and one, two thousand and two is first year, yes.
Thank you. Um, and, and I think some incorporated that expectation and some did not, and he's indicated that they did.
The seven and a half million dollars everybody incorporates because that's the law and that's what, and that's reflected in everybody's revenues. Now, the additional twenty million dollars in this year ended up at thirty-two million. Plus the two point eight million we've been cut on media and Ed Services. Uh, it's still, we're supposed to include that in our revenues as far as our published budget and what we submit to the DE. But we're not allowed to account for that anywhere else. As, so what we do, or I do at least, is I bump up my expenditures by the same amount. Because otherwise it shows that my fund balance grows and that's not gonna happen. I mean, I have, we have grown our fund balance slightly over the years. Uh, I, every place I've ever worked, uh. When, I've never bankrupted any place and no one's gonna go bankrupt while I'm in charge of the finances. That's. Just ain't gonna happen. I'm sorry. Um, so that's how I do it. I wanna make sure that we account for it because if we didn't, we'd be broken.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer the question? Okay, so then our historical fund balance. Uh, as I said, uh, we've grown it slightly over the years, in particular twenty-one and twenty-two and. Uh, I think they've mentioned before about the ARP funds, the American Rescue Plan Funds. Uh, we had two and a half million dollars come in on that. And that was a one-time money. So I mean, that was not gonna be a continuing program. And so what we've started talking about doing is some uh, extra professional development. And do some minor pop buildings, uh, projects, a lot of minor building projects. Our building, the main building was built in the mid-sixties, nineteen sixty-five or so roughly. Uh, over the years, we've patched together and. Did the best we could because we didn't have the money and we wanted to put it into the Student Support Services. Um, let's see. The uh, building's getting old, it's starting to take a lot of uh, work to keep it up and same with our other buildings. Uh, so. Any questions on this slide?
So. There.
And this again, this is was the published budget.
Published, yes.
I, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I, I couldn't see the last.
Oh, okay.
Bro, so. So before. You know, I thought legislation was actually passed, you were still projecting. Pretty good decrease in your unassigned budget.
Yes, sir. We, we're planning on doing some capital projects. And some extra professional development. The last couple of years, primarily because of COVID. Our professional development has been uh, curtailed. And so we want our staffer to be the experts for the schools to rely on. And so we need to give that professional development back up. And get those people the latest and greatest tools to help the teachers with their students.
I, I get that, but under this and. I'll just drop it here. Is that, but the. Projection line is not sustainable.
No, it's not.
There's gotta be some change. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. The, the budget that we have. And then we put together at first and then what we've adjusted it for, for the uh, changes HF twenty-six, twelve, whatever is. Uh, it's pointed out some things that we need to change. But at the time, and we'll get into that here and just be on the next uh, couple of slides from here. Um, that. We're, we don't know what's gonna happen next year. We don't know how many staff are coming back. They're already jumping ship. And we've lost a lot of staff. Some of those staff were not gonna be able to replace, period. I mean, the AA is not the most desirable place to work, but the most. The future doesn't look the brightest for the AA system. And so for staff to. Up and move their family or whatever to, and tie it to our AA. A lot of staff aren't gonna do that. So uh, that's one thing that we've done. Uh, the capital projects, we're not gonna do them anymore. We're finishing up some. And we've for uh, fifty years now, we've been in that building and we've done the best we can and. Uh, we do have to do something about our entry doors. We've punched enough holes in that entry door. That it's no longer a good door. So we are replacing our entry doors. Um, so anyway, does that?
And I think, I think I can address some of your questions here in a couple of slides too, that I think will give you what you're asking.
Yeah.
Yeah. So again, this is the same as everybody else did, the published publication of the budget. And that does drop it down to the one point. Three million dollar fund balance. We do have that there. Uh, that does have that extra PD, those capital projects in there. And I'll go on to the next. Here is what's happening to our revenues. Um, our share of the cut that was finally passed is a point one million, including the seven and a half million. Uh, two point one, two point two million. Uh, so you'll see the changes in the taxes and the state aid controlled funding. They did uh, reallocate how they did the, the spread of the cuts. And so that was actually helped us out a little bit as far as it was a detriment to Hartland. Uh, because we've been losing enrollment over the years and. Uh, okay, here on the IDEA grants, this will be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so less than the previous slide. Because of the D family educator. Uh, the rest of the grants are staying the same. Uh, and what we, all we can do there is we won't know those until uh, next month or June. But our share of the federal grants will be, and so we just base it off of what we had this year. And for the most part, that's safe because each year we don't normally have a decrease. Uh, most of the years we haven't stayed the same or a slight increase. Uh, everything else pretty well stays the same. Uh, we do not know how much of the uh, services, Ed Services and Media, the school districts. Uh, want to purchase back yet. We're still trying to ascertain that. Uh, we've had a lot of the school, and I'll let Nathan speak to that. He's been working with the superintendents. And the files, move on to the expenditure side. Because of all the uncertainties and stuff at the time that we put this together. Uh, we decided, well, we'll leave the expenditures the same. And see what happens to us. Uh, we have the fund balance that we know that we can at least. Get going next year and survive next year on. And at that way, we don't jump off a cliff. And uh. Decimate our Ed Services and Media Division and then find out next fall or a year from now that the school districts want those services. And so our position was, and we knew that we're gonna have some staff which can replace and there'd be some. Uh, attrition that we weren't gonna replace. And so uh, we decided we'd leave the expenditures the same, cause as I mentioned before, the. Certified budget has just said, sure, spending cap, it's not the actual line item budget. Uh, the actual line item budget is still a work in progress. And will be until sometime this summer, just before school starts. At that point in time, we'll know. What staff are coming back and we'll also know what's uh, services a school districts want. So our best guess right now, I'm projecting our fund balance to be somewhere between four and a half and five million dollars. Uh, a year from now, July one to two, twenty twenty-five.
Any questions on this section here?
Might be doing it. Oh, you have the revenues and the expenditures? And now, sir?
I'll talk briefly here and then just, and then open it up to questions. You know, since um, April sixteenth. We have made some decisions. So we are, we are gonna reduce fifteen positions through attrition. Um, and then we have, currently have twenty-seven vacancies. So the one thing that I think. When we look at unspent balance, uh, that I continue to remind myself from the dual school district perspective of the AAs is. Um, one point one million dollars or four million dollars and a, and a twenty-eight million dollar budget is, or thirty-five million dollar budget is significantly. Higher percentage than it is at the larger agencies. Um, so those fund balances, when you look at a percentage while the, while the, the dollar amount is smaller at Great Prairie, the percentage is. Um, comparable or higher in some cases. Um, Dennis talked a little bit about, and several chief administrators talked about, so I'm not gonna talk about it significantly. We're sitting, I feel like we're sitting in a very unique situation as a rural agency. Uh, we're continuing to work in with districts who, and figuring out what types of services they want in those educational and media realms. We're seeing that the majority of, which I think is gonna be a, a super majority of our districts. Are gonna allocate most of those, if not a hundred percent of those funds back to the agency. And that was part of the decision we made to retain those staff. Uh, my biggest fear as a, as someone who'd been in the system the last ten years was if we let those staff go and districts came back in January and said, we really want those for July one to twenty-five. Then we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have the staff to hire. Uh, so we will run a deficit and kinda to John's question around. Um, what that will look like. I think by July one to twenty-five, we will have to make some decisions to readjust that FTE count. And I think, I think that, John, that's what you're asking, but if not, feel free to redirect.
No, it's. What was presented was not sustainable.
Very.
And I understand that. There's so many. Key variables that are just dangling out there yet. That's very difficult. Guesstimate at this time. Now, what was recommended to us was um. That you have some more work to do before our May ninth board meeting. And I'm assuming that that work is well underway.
Yeah, I, I feel confident. I mean, whatever the board would ask of us, I think we could supply that. Quickly. I mean, we've already got some of it started.
Now, when I look at. Unassigned budgets, I don't look at the number per se. I look at in perspective of the percent of what your budget is.
Sure.
Understand that. Understand that, so. Questions for the Great Prairie.
I know our job isn't to necessarily compare the AAs. But given the information that's been shared at this presentation and the prior one. What's the difference other than the ending balances?
Well.
A three million dollar swing that. No, I know, but it's also. You know, the, the other one. Well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. And they just put it in here as opposed to they said they're going to do it, but it's not in there yet. I mean, are, are we asking them just to supplement? Are we going to ask them to just supplement what they said based on this? And then it's approved?
I'll defer that to Cassandra.
So there was, uh, similar situation a few years ago in Mississippi Bend when they had completely projected to have a negative fund balance. And the state board, um, at that time actually required that they put in writing and provide back to the state board an assurance that they would balance the budget. And then what they required is to provide a balanced budget by September one of that same year. Um, if anybody also did similar research, you'll find that there was also an accreditation visit required in conjunction with that. The state board took action at the same time to require, um, a, a review. I did reach out to our school improvement team and talk to them. They actually just finished, desk got it and said that it went very well. And so there are no accreditation issues and so no recommendation from the department to, to do any additional visit. However, the precedence for, um, requiring the stated assurances that they'll balance the budget and then provide it additionally beyond the May fifteenth date, um, provide an updated budget are the two action items that would go along with the recommendation. And, and it sounds like based on everything that they've said and, and we talked to Gina and Dennis had talked to and we know that even previously, we know that there is work underway. They recognize that there was work underway. Um, uh, just that the nut, the ending number isn't there yet. And that's what I think from a approving them, uh, to spend uh, to overspend is not ideal.
Understood, understood. Well, we're not.
One of the differences was that others had a a, a bigger question as far as unassigned balance.
Except maybe the last one.
Yep.
Well, and just acknowledgement of greater adjustment of expenditures prior to.
Well, I, I have no issue with having this be converted into writing so that seven point one point two reflects what you folks talked about. I think that's a great, that's what it should be. So I, I would make that motion just to return the budget. Not to approve or disapprove, just to return the budget for further supplementation based on the comments made at this meeting.
Second, yeah.
So we have a motion to.
Is that allowable?
Yeah.
I just said.
Basically, the recommendation of return the budget with comments and require greater detail. As far as assurances in writing by May ninth, which is our next board meeting and submit the balance budget planned no later than September first.
So moved.
Okay. And it was seconded by Cass and then supported by Mary.
I hope that's reasonable.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's kept. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I do have one question. It's not impacting the motion, though, but, um, some of the other AAs have talked about their partnership plans and I, I did hear you mention that, but were there other AAs?
Yeah, so just through, just through attrition, our, I mentioned a little earlier, our executive leadership team will shrink from six, uh, to at least minimum of four, uh, based on resignation. So we're currently, our most logical partners are probably, uh, the Grantwood, Mississippi Bend area or with Heartland. And we have started some talks with, with John at, at Grantwood, uh, recently about what does that look like? I, I've met with my board president and talked through some different scenarios. Dennis and I have talked through the cost savings of that. And Dennis is one of the, one of the, the shortages. So one of those areas we'll be looking to share or restructure for next year will be our chief financial officer.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks a lot.
All right, we have Green Hills next. Martin.
Well, good morning. Thank you. My name is Jason Ford. I'm the chief administrator for Green Hills AEA.
Kelly Allen, I'm the director of business operations for Green Hills AEA.
My second year as chief, uh, previous to that, I was seven years as a regional administrator, uh, in the area of special education. Previous to that, I'm in my thirty-first year. Previous to that, I worked for Council of Schools. I was a par educator, a special education teacher, building administrator at all levels and, uh, central office. So just thank you for inviting us to be here to present a little bit about Green Hills. Get started with that first photo. Um, so that's, uh, three hundred and eleven of our folks. We, as a part of our media center, we have some drones and some of our tech people go to schools and help students with drones and, uh, and you have to get special permits and all kind of interesting things when you, when you, uh, drive a drone or fly a drone. And so we had an opening day session and we asked our people to get together and I like the photo because it reminds me how the, the agency is made up of individuals, but we're together. And it really goes to the spirit of our serve and support and advocate, which is our mission. We talk a lot about mission-driven service, uh, in Green Hills and we're proud of that. Uh, we have a, a board like all AAs and proud of our board also. Let me get out and then go.
I want you to double click.
Like always, we have a board, really proud of our board. We have, uh, board members that have served decades, literally, um, thirty-plus years in some cases. We have former superintendents. Uh, we have a former chief. We have Mary Ann Anusa, who served faithfully in the house as a representative. Lori Stitz works for our community college as a director. I won't go through all of them, but former teacher, um, vice president of a, of a bank. Great people. We have six office locations. We own one of them. Um, our main office is on Highway ninety-two by Trainer. And, uh, if you've never been there, it's a pretty neat place. It's an old Nike missile base and it was made in the fifties and, and we're proud of it. It's, uh, well-maintained, cinder block. I happened to be raised, my father was in the air force and so, uh, the facility protected off it back in the, in the fifties during the Cold War. And it's just that you got a lot of history and, uh, we're, we're proud of the location. Our other, uh, locations we lease, uh, three of them are embedded within school districts that allows us to partner with closely and then save some dollars, obviously. Uh, we've got one in Avoca, one in Creston, another in Missouri Valley, and then we do, uh, rent two private facilities. One's in Osceola and one in Red Oak. Our board meetings are held in Red Oak. Again, we're very mission-driven. Uh, you know, being people of service, all of us have dedicated our lives to young people and to schools and communities and we're real proud of that. So that drives a lot of what we do, uh, particularly our core values. In the spirit of collaboration and supports for schools, we have an innovative, uh, model where we put our kids at the center. It's a constant reminder that we're serving children and families and schools. So in the center, it's kind of hard to see there, but it says children, family and schools. And then we surround those children with directors and support personnel. And I won't go through all that, but you can see we have a, a number of divisions that rally around students and support them in different ways, uh, including our board of directors around the outside. Like other AAs, we attract experts. Uh, we're really expert of experts, which requires years of service, um, but also education and expertise. We're proud of that as an AA. We serve forty-three districts. Uh, we have fifteen full counties and three partial counties. We also have six non-pubs uh, in our area, about forty thousand students, uh, with public schools, uh, just over eleven hundred as we think about non-pubs. And then, um, we have three thousand teachers, hundred and eight part-time. I won't read all that, but you, you see. And then we ended with families added that because that's also something that we often don't realize is that our staff in some cases as a part of early access, actually go into homes and serve fam- families in their homes and we're proud of that work also. Like I said, we own one building or one series of buildings. The, the missile base has these series of, of locations. Um, one of them was a print shop. I'll share that. We closed our print shop four years ago and we partnered with Northwest for one year and then we partner currently with Heartland. Uh, it's, it allowed us to save some money. We also needed that particular facility for some professional learning and so we were able to do both of those at the same time. Of course, we have a media collection like everybody. Uh, we have six vehicles, five of those are vans and, uh, one of them is a pickup truck that we use. We have our own maintenance staff that we use to clean the driveway in the winter time. If you're familiar with this slide, I want to highlight four things on the next slide that are unique to Green Hills that we're proud of. We could have shared lots of different things, but one of the things we, we're all well aware of is that there's, um, I'm not going to use mental health crisis, but certainly we need to pay attention to the mental health of our young people, which often spills and intertwine, intertwines with behavior challenges. And so we, uh, we're proud of at least four different things that we're doing. One thing that's very unique to, uh, Green Hills is a partnership with the Fourth Judicial Court. And they're called school-based interventionists. We have twenty-two of them. And it's been a, a partnership between the judicial court, uh, the AEA and the schools. And these are folks that are embedded in the schools. They work with very tough and challenging students who are potential dropouts uh, at risk for lots of different things, attendance and so forth. And those folks, uh, again, are embedded in the school and it's a nice partnership. You know, across Iowa, we've heard a lot about how can we look for opportunities as we think about the mental health regions, as we think about the department bed, the AAs and others? How can we partner at deeper levels? And I, I really think it's an exemplar model program where multiple entities can come together on behalf of children. In this case, kids are at risk. So, um, you know, with chronic absenteeism being a conversation, I do feel like this might be one lever we could leverage. We'd need to partner with more courts. We, we serve, uh, fifteen districts, uh, as a part of this program. Mostly on the west half. We do have the Fifth Judicial Court in the, in the east half. We're in conversations about expanding that, but it's a philosophical shift where you invest early as opposed to on the backend, right? We understand that with early access and preschool, that it works because we invest early. And the SBI program is a good way for us to take those dollars. It's kind of pay, pay me now, pay me later and invest early in, in those, those challenging students. So we're proud of that program. Um, also master's level social work. Uh, one of the challenges in particularly rural Iowa, we know is students that need mental health supports and there's either no access in the small community or it's difficult to get to the Des Moines area or Omaha or so forth. And even then, sometimes it's harder to get in. So we offer school-based therapy, which is super helpful. These, these are master social workers. These are amazing people that are highly credentialed. Some of them have came from private industry. Uh, we have nine, we're actually expanding to ten. And these are, again, staff that are embedded in the schools that give literally one-on-one therapy to children who need it. Without that, those turn into behavior challenges, those affect classrooms, those in some cases affect whole schools. So it's an essential part of, uh, one of the things that we're doing in terms of making that area better.
Just to know for board members, is that one thing to have services available to students remotely. It's another thing to have them embedded in, in schools. Oftentimes, some of the students that need the services don't have transportation availability to get to the services, even if they could find them.
Yes, it's just, uh, it's impractical for some, you know, if you're, if you're having trouble getting your child to school, let alone getting them to therapy, you know, with our chronic absenteeism. So those start to compound pretty quickly. Uh, our therapeutic classrooms is another kind of piece of that puzzle. Um, we have two, we have one in Harlan and one in Red Oak. Uh, those are students from our schools that attend. We provide the teacher, we provide the par educator. We also provide a behavior specialist that can work with, uh, students who have these challenging behaviors. And in addition, once a week, one of those master social workers actually goes there and does some therapy with those students who need it. And so it's a good, full, comprehensive package for those young people. It's not big numbers. It's usually six to eight students. Um, schools count on us for those services. We were thankful that as a part of the new bill, we're able to, uh, offer master social workers, we're able to offer, uh, therapeutic classrooms. We're proud of those, uh, those things. Uh, and then finally, uh, we have a whole host of people that help schools with behavior. Autism is something that we talk quite a bit about, but these again are experts in these, in these areas. And, um, we do a combination of different things from a, from a referral, uh, from a family emailing me as chief because they don't know who to talk to. And then I, you know, call somebody and, and they go meet with that in a way. And so a whole continuum of offerings in this area of behavior, autism supports, uh, sometimes embedded in the classroom, sometimes observing, taking data, sometimes coaching a teacher, sometime giving a whole universal professional development for our staff. So there's a variety of things that happen there. Okay, turn over, Kelly.
All right, um, you have access to the staffing budget detail, so I won't, uh, go into those details. Um, the next slide, uh, the first column is my published budget. It was done on January sixth, the order to meet the publication deadlines and have the approval before. So when House House, twenty-six, twelve came out, back end, redid, um, the, the figures. Um, I just want to let you know that, that under the, of course taxes, under other local revenue, um, it includes things like interest. We also have a one point three million dollar grant with the Iowa West Foundation for preschools in Potawatomi County. That money, we are the fiduciary for those funds. They, uh, funnel to districts who have meeting at certain recommendations and, uh, standards to, uh, receive that money.
I want to highlight that. That's a really unique situation where we have private industry working closely with an AEA and schools. And we just actually completed a longitudinal study that I'd be glad to provide to you that shows some really strong data on how when we have those types of partnerships and then we're proactive, that all students benefit, but in particular students with disabilities and even more so students of poverty. And it's a real strong study. I met with Representative Stone on some preschool, uh, legislation. We're going to continue to, uh, ask everybody across the state to support that. And again, there's this idea of partnership and how we're, we're working together to make a very, uh, impactful, um, response to kids of, of need.
Um, state aid is state aid. Other state, uh, resources is, uh, part of that is the funding that we get from the Fourth Judicial Court for the school-based, based interventionist program, um, state early access dollars and, uh, state mental health dollars. We receive the IDEA federal grants, uh, part B, part C, section six, one, nine. We also receive, uh, funding that we funnel through to the districts, flow-through dollars. Um, other federal resources are title programs like neglected and delinquent and English language learners. My expenditures, again, the first column is the budget that I published back in January. Instruction, our, our teachers, student support services are range anywhere from schools, uh, social workers, school psychologists, speech-language pathologists. Staff support services, our, uh, content consultants, uh, library, media. Services. We have admin, administration and central support. Those include board of directors, the, um, board secretary, the chief, the finance, human resources, along with commercial package insurance, legal fees, outfeed machine leases, uh, computer software. We have building and operations and maintenance, which are janitorial and maintenance and then things to be buildings running like water, propane. And then, um, other non-instructional programs. And then other non-instructional programs is our family educator liaison. The FVP was cut. Green Hills feels the relationship that our family educator has with families and districts, we're funding that position for next year. Jason, do you want to expand on that or?
Yeah, I mean, obviously we're going long-term, we're going to have to figure out a funding source. But this particular lady is amazing, like many people, and families count on her. And so we're going to invest in that position and then we'll swing back around and figure out we're going to fund that over the next couple of years.
The other financing uses are the flow-through dollars, the IDEA Part B flow-through dollars that, that go to the districts. This is, I've asked, this is my published budget, my reestimated twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-three actual. This is the history of our fund balance. Fiscal years nineteen, twenty-three are actual, fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five are estimates. Again, fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, we had an influx of American Rescue Plan dollars. So that's why you see such an increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. And then those were one-time dollars that helped us. It's helping us with twenty-four, but they will be completely gone after twenty-four, so.
Before legislation, you're projecting a million-dollar balance on assignment?
It was one point two when I published it. It's now two point seven in my revised. That's what my fund balance will be. We are looking at all positions right now. We have people, we have designs, retired early, the riff. We are scrutinizing every position to make sure that it's absolutely.
That's one thing that's probably relatively unique with Green Hills is we, we went ahead and reduced force this, this year. And then we saw that as a proactive measure, realizing that we need to get through the next several years as we figure out the, now, we're not calling it fee-for-service, we're calling it service with a fee because we want to continue to be people of service in Iowa. Other states that do this and have been successful, call it fee-for-service. And so we flipped the script on that. I want to mention that because I think that's important in terms of how we want to do business moving forward. But we did reduce nineteen staff. That was our complete media department in order to try to get ahead of some of what you're referencing. And, and we also had thirty-two, as of this morning, I checked, thirty-two retirements that weren't anticipated and resignations. And then we had eleven previous to the, to the new bill. So it's pretty substantial in terms of percentages. We're typically ten to twelve percent. We're at nineteen to twenty percent as it stands now. Part of that was our choice and again, being proactive. It was a hard decision. We made sure we weren't hurtful or harsh, but certainly it needed to happen now to be proactive and in order to swing things back around. We feel good about where we're at right now, given those decisions. In addition to the nineteen, what will happen is of those thirty-two, we'll do like other AEA's. We, we will intentionally not replace some of those positions. We'll be much more strategic about who we hire and when. For instance, I mentioned earlier, we're actually adding a master social worker because that's a partnership with schools. Schools are asking for that. And so we want to be thinking ahead in terms of, you know, as we think about service with a fee, we're going to need to pay even more intention in terms of what their need is, what they're asking for, because that's going to fall through with what they're going to pay for, willing to pay for, so. Part of the, you know, as we think about solvency ratios, one of the things that our board has really pushed over the last three to five years is to get those, those numbers down. They set a public goal of eight percent. We actually would have reached that goal in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, but then we had the R R funds and some other things that happened. But we'll continue to, right now we're at fourteen point seven. I think the state average is fourteen point five. So that will come down both because that's one of our goals, but also to ensure that we have enough staff. And then in the brave new world that we're entering, people are, and they always have been, but people are key. We need to maintain experts of experts because we're all willing to pay for high quality. And so our position is to maintain staff to the greatest degree possible. Look for other opportunities to save, such as the print shop has saved us some money because it's centralized with, within Heartland. And then we run vans back and forth. But we're going to be looking for those types of opportunities, sharing of staff, like you heard before. We're looking at an opportunity for Kelly. We have a rural district that needs some support in their business office, kind of to bridge the gap until they can find somebody because those people are difficult to find. And so that'll garner, we'll, we'll come up with a financial agreement that's reasonable, that benefits up us, but also benefits the schools. Also, we've reduced administration already thirty-plus percent. I'm a very strong believer in that, or the way I say it, we don't need any more central office people. We don't need any more Jasons. There's enough Jasons across the land, so to speak. What we need is people that are in school. So we've shifted since I've been chief, we reduced one administrator the first year, one administrator for this year and an additional five for next year. Part of that is retirements, part of that is the legislation and people looking for other opportunities. So with their opportunity comes our opportunity to save some dollars, to decentralize the work that we do and to push people into schools. Now, you do create an evaluation challenge when you do that because by code, every employee needs to be evaluated. So as you reduce administrators, you have to solve this problem of the requirement of evaluation. The way we're going to solve that is we work with the BOE. We've worked with Purb and we are promoting within to these supervisor positions. They're called supervisors of special ed, special education. They do need to get evaluator approval, but we call them working supervisors. We expect them to be in schools. We expect them to be working with our staff. And what that does is still allows us to be faithful to evaluation, but reduce true administration. So that's something that we're talking about as a state, just as in another example where we're turning this challenge into an opportunity and embracing some innovation.
Anything else for us this morning?
Don't believe so.
Questions from board members, please.
I liked, I liked your last comment. Appreciate that. Thank you. Her, do you believe you folks are able to deliver the services you need to deliver with the budget you're presenting as adjusted?
Yes, yes, we feel we're in a good spot.
Hearing crickets.
Now, I want to do, make, make one comment on the question about goals. We don't want to get in the weeds on it, but one of the things as we think about Iowa, we think about the Department of Ed, we think about AEA's, we think about your, your goals and our goals. We, we do have an alignment problem. We have an alignment problem. We need to be much more aligned across our systems. I mentioned mental health regions. I feel like every month I find an opportunity that we missed in not partnering with them. So as we move to seven, that, that excites me a little bit in terms of opportunity there. But as, as Director Snow brings forth goals, as you bring forth goals, you'll look to see AEA's partnering around those goals more and more. And as, as we can get much more focused around goals and we're all working on similar or certainly maybe even the same things, we're going to see that student and treatment grow. And so these, these partnerships are going to be critical. We have some challenges, but I believe in our people and I know great people, people of innovation, people that are open to adapting and doing things differently. With that brings hope and with that, I think we can close that gap.
You know, we, we very much appreciate the partnership opportunities, not only among your AEA systems, but also within your communities and your regions overall. So economic development organizations provide funding for early childhood care and things like that. And so are the county governments starting to do that. So we hope that that, that sharing opportunity extends beyond just your organizations and out into the greater community because at the end of the day, all of our taxes go into all of those entities, right? And, and we know that there's a big benefit for our kids when we all collaborate.
Thank you. You agree.
Right, hearing no other questions, I'll call for.
I move approval of Green Hills AEA. That's it, that's person.
And moved by Brooke and seconded by Nathan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye. Probably same sign. Questions, Gary. Thank you guys. All right, we're ready for lunch. Make it. Break the bulk, three. Welcome the reps from Keystone. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Happy to be here. I'm Stan Ryan Gans. I'm in my second year as chief administrator at Keystone. As was mentioned earlier, and we can talk about later, I'll, here next year. Chief is leaving and, you know, position ourselves for, looking about forward movement within the AEA system. I've been with the AEA, as I mentioned, this is my second year. Before that, I was at Dubuque Community Schools for eighteen years, as superintendent for ten. For that in Wilton, Iowa, as a high school principal, so, and for that in North Scott High School. So I've been in the small, medium and large-sized districts and now happy to be with the, the AEA system. And this, of course, is the brains of the operation, so Sharon will.
I'm Sharon Hogg and I've been with Keystone for many years. This is my first year as the business manager and agency treasurer.
So we thought we'd start a little bit talking about who we are as an, as an agency. Some of the slides that I have are very similar to the ones you saw this morning. So I may go briefly through those, but if you want me to back up or have questions, certainly let me know and I'd be happy to do that. So in the past.
Like it's doing it here, yeah.
So, sorry.
I joined as panelists.
Yep, you just need to click the share screen button, the green button along the bottom. And then you pick your presentation from the options. There you go. Now, if you just do the show. There you're back on.
Sorry about that. Okay.
Perfect. We've been working in the year and a half I've been there on our strategic plan. So I want to share a few bits of that today as we, as we start, so if you go back to the. You know, obviously as you do, we start with the mission, vision, that, those pieces. We have some work to do. You'll see this is, is a draft because we're trying to get to the point of measurable outcomes, which was something that the AEA's had, or Keystone had talked about, but we really wanted to solidify that. Going to circle background and make sure that our goals are aligned closely with your goals as a state board, which I believe they relatively are. But so if, when you see those goals, if you have some, you know, some questions about how that alignment happens, know that it's still in certain. You know, our mission as, as an AEA is dedicated to providing impactful leadership and innovative services to ensure districts have access to equitable, effective and efficient resources which engage and empower schools and families to thrive in a rapidly changing world by improving learning and living for all students. As I mentioned, my background is in both large school, superintendency, small school, principalship and, and a medium-sized school as a teacher and knowing and believing that all schools, all kids benefit from the AEA system by making sure that regardless if they're in the, you know, Eastern Almackie that graduates twenty-two or twenty-four a year, or if they're in Dubuque that graduates eight hundred students per year or if they're in the Prokial system in Dubuque, that they have access to the experts that they need to really maximize their educational opportunities. And so I think the AEA system is a, is a good partner with, with districts and certainly were with me when I was in the roles I had mentioned previously. So a couple of things.
You want this one?
Yep, sorry. So our core values, talk a lot about who do we, who are we as an agency? What do we want to contribute to the educational landscape? You'll always hear us speak first of kids. We are an educational institution and every decision we make, from the most routine and mundane to the largest budgetary decision should revolve around what is best for kids. And so we endeavor to make those decisions in that manner. We want to collaborate with our educational partners as well as the other entities that serve. I heard comments earlier today about making sure we're connected. So I'm one of the regional mental health board, just trying to make sure that there's alignment of resources, not duplication, but, you know, how do we maximize our ability to serve the students and young people of Northeast Iowa? We always want to be innovative. We're in a unique position to think innovatively and in some cases have the time and the space to do that in ways that districts aren't always capable of doing. And I say that out of respect because I lived that life for a long time as a superintendent. We want to be mindful service and then professional autonomy. We want to empower the folks that we hire to ensure that they have the autonomy to make right decisions because it's often at that local level, that, that one-on-one situation where what's best for kids most clearly comes into, into play. You'll notice the next, and I won't go through all these slides, but this is our, our strategic plan as far as our goals and then our measurable outcomes. And you'll see a lot of those measurable outcomes are in the development phase because as we back up and look at our goals and how they reflect and enhance hopefully your goals as, as state board, how are they aligned? And then we do want to get to the measurable outcomes. In previous roles, pretty firm believer in strategic planning and that that only works is if there are measurable, quantifiable outcomes that work for helping us understand how we're moving the agency forward.
Program overview, I won't spend a lot of time on that. I think you've heard a lot about that. You understand the three areas that AEA's, special education, media tech, educational services. So special education, again, as was presented by my peers, you understand what special ed does. Media technology. Educational services. Let's jump that slide. The things that we take very much to heart and I think will serve as well as we move into the service-for-fee model is our customer surveys, the districts, the principals, the teachers, the employees of the districts. And they fill out a yearly, I guess, a customer satisfaction survey, for, for lack of a better term. And we've always done extremely well with those results. And so we know that many of our districts rely on us very heavily. Again, whether they're large, medium or small, they, they look to us to provide the resources that, that are beyond what they currently have the capacity to, to provide.
How many people do you survey?
It's open to all. If you're an employee of a school district, survey is open to you. So we often work with the superintendents and the billing principals to send pretty consistent reminders. Please fill a survey out, please fill a survey out. So I think in a normal year, we'll have, and I don't know if I have those results, but, you know, eight or nine hundred, which is, we'd like it to be more, but that's probably pretty typical for us, eight hundred, nine.
That percentage of.
So we serve about, that is probably, social studies teacher doing math, probably about, about ten percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have a ten percent response, right?
Yes. Not great, but, you know, we do what we can to, to move that forward, so.
What about families?
So for the first time this year, families were included in that survey. That's a great question. They had not been historically. And so we backed up and did a second survey that included families. It's harder to reach families because we don't necessarily have their information unless their child is on an IEP or we have that connection. So all families who are served directly, but then we ask districts to help us get those response, or those questions out to families, absolutely.
Do you understand like where AEA or where school districts kind of end and AEA's, like do, do families understand like this, like what they're, I guess, what you guys provide or, I mean, probably something to work directly with you, but.
So, so the more involved their child is with, you know, so I have one of my children that was on an IEP and so I work very directly with the, with the AEA system. My other two, he didn't. So if I put myself in that lens, I might not have known what the AEA did. But we've endeavored in the past year and a half, two years to really educate the community about how, when the robotics are in the classroom, how, when the classroom book sets show up. That is an AEA service because I'm not sure the, the larger community always understands that because it, you know, we want to work really synchronously with the school district and make sure that the staff have what they want. We're kind of like the utilities, you know, we're behind the wall.
Kind of like the utilities, you know, are behind the wall and not necessarily seen, but when you flip the switch, you need the the materials to be there. So we've worked hard to try to get to that point, but long way to go, I think. Currently, we serve 21 public school districts, 21 accredited non-public school buildings. You'll see the students listed there as well, teachers. And others in this. So when you see teachers, you know, those are, it doesn't include the administrators of the paraprofessionals or the other folks that we do provide services to as well. A list that I think you've seen previously about the AEA system as a whole and what's provided and then some unique pieces. So a lot of what we do for our districts is especially smaller districts revolves around technology, whether it be through group purchases. But also through our tech director, configures firewalls, can, you know, will work hand in hand with a district to make sure that they they're providing the, you know, the bandwidth and the the cybersecurity that they are held, you know, accountable for because they deal with student information. So a lot of that with very aggressive technology department. Also, I know a question came up earlier about media services and band deliveries. A few years ago, my predecessor looked into moving band deliveries to one day per week as a cost efficiency. But just based on the volume and based on the requests of the districts, they pushed, they were like, no, we need two days a week. We need those robots. We need those books. We need the Star Lab, we need all of these. So we do currently do two day a week delivery to all school buildings within our footprint, which is a little bit unique and and we're, we honor that by making sure that we have a first class inventory within our library, within our, within our warehouse of things that are needed within the stores. Briefly, who, you know, who do we employ, you know, on our professional staff? You'll see the most have advanced degrees, masters degree or higher. We do have physical doctorates in physical therapy, occupational therapy, audiologist. People with EDSs, PhDs, there are changes to this. I think you've heard from others because of staff turnover. One of our areas of greatest concern is audiologists. We have two provide that service. One has left us. We have one and that tends to be definitely a shortage area as we try to hire. In some areas, we've been very successful in special education positions, but the audiologist is the one that probably is left the left us the most concerned to serve the school districts within our footprint. We do have a staff position breakdown. It's a link that I can go into if you're interested in seeing that piece, but it does, we just click on it real quick and we don't have to spend a.
I think we've also.
You've seen it. You've got a copy of that. Okay. Didn't want to get too too far into the weeds, but yeah.
Seems like that's a common problem. Sorry, the audiologist. It seems like a lot of AEA's have mentioned today that that's a really hard position to fill. Seems like there's probably a need though. So I mean, is that something I don't? I don't know how you fill that position or I mean, is that something that AEA's can share? I mean, I don't know how many there are in the state, but.
So we're looking at trying to figure out ways to share that. So we also have in some areas, we happen to have a surplus of speech linguists pathologists that we had. Were fortunate to have a number of applicants beyond what we needed. And so we did hire additional knowing that we would need to support other AEA's, especially Central Rivers. Our hope would be that most of the time that is an in person interaction, but if we have the staff, sometimes that might be sort of the teletherapy, the tele situation, but at least we'll have those hopes on staff. So we do look at hiring around the state that, you know, if we can hire and you can't, how do we do that and make that work? Audiology is, I think, that's just a really nuanced field that a lot of folks don't go into. And then, of course, a lot of them are pulled into medical settings as well. So there's great competition for those for those folks.
Also be careful if you have a shortage area that you don't burn out the person that's there.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's it's, that's exactly right. We don't go, want to go from two to one to zero because we've doubled the work there. This is our what our staff currently looks like. I think it was also mentioned, if you look at those top three positions there, myself, our Director of Educational Services and then we're special ed. If those positions exist as they currently are, they, we know there'll be some changes in the special ed position, right? But we're going to share those with Central Rivers. They just happen to have the same people moving on as we had available. So we will go from, you know, the Keystone to serving Central Rivers as well. So that is we get into staffing conversations and budget conversations that won't be reflected in our current budget, but will have a significant impact on our budget because the salaries will be shared between the the two agencies. This is the map of our of our current coverage. You'll see Dubuque sort of to the southeast. Riceville to along the Minnesota border is in the northwest. And so following the Mississippi River down, we are divided into three regions. You'll see the the yellow stars are our own location. So our main headquarters is in El Cator. We have an office in Dubuque that is shared. If you're familiar with Dubuque, it is the other half of the Dubuque School District Central Office. We share that facility with them. And then in Decorah, we have, it's actually an older church that was that was renovated for us. The black dots are where we rent space. In most cases, those are classrooms. Our philosophy has been that we wanted to have a physical location, at least a classroom that was adjacent to all, every district. So if you look at the map, every district borders one of our locations just from an access standpoint. In one situation, it's not a classroom. It's we rented from the local library. Capital assets, shared that on a previous slide, vehicles, media delivery ends, you know, 5,000 square miles, every building twice a week. So they get a lot of mileage on those vans. And of course, your typical snow blower, windsweeper, lawn care things, print shop equipment, media kits. So when you think of them, that's a lot of what's in our in our library, right? The media kits, it's iPads, it's robots. It's also their OT PT equipment. So that's delivered through our media system. If a if an OT or PT is recommending a student have a particular piece of equipment that they need to access for mobility purposes. We've got a variety of things that they can try out until they find the one that that fits right. And then they go from that point. 3D printers, cameras, computers, we have planetariums. If you've never seen one of the planetariums, really neat blows. It's inflatable. 25 students at a time can go in there and we train the teachers on how to do the Star Labs or the planetarium. So then, of course, technology equipment probably goes without saying, our staff needs to to have the equipment they need to do their their walls.
Guess the next piece is mine. It's the side by side budget. And I think you all probably have a copy of it showing the actual for FY '23 and then what we had reestimated for the current year and the budget for fiscal year '25. This is what was published by our board in February. Are there any questions on this one? Okay, then the slide is is our fund balance history. And so you'll see the the couple of years a little bit higher. Again, that was because of the the ARP funding that that we received during those years. Something to note with our fund balance is the only thing we really have. Right now, we've got during fiscal year '20, I believe it was during COVID, we had some early retirement incentive packages. So we currently have a few few of those people that are still receiving money. It'll gradually drift off in the next couple of years, but they chose to to leave early because of COVID. Any questions on the unbalance as it looks here and the history here?
This looks pretty stable except for the COVID bump, so.
Absolutely. And the predecessor did a good job making sure that COVID dollars were spent on things that were, you know, sort of one time or short use and, you know, wouldn't create a cliff.
Nonrecurring expenses.
Nonrecurring expenses, absolutely.
The proposed revenues by major source I've done, as some of the others have done, shown the published budget amounts on the left hand side and the adjusted budget based on what we knew a couple, two or three weeks ago. We, you'll notice that the we did adjust for the media and ed services reduction there in under the taxes. And then we've also bumped up our other local revenues because we anticipate some services that schools are going to purchase with their 60%.
To talk about that a little bit, so we have worked with our superintendents and 75% of our districts, often based on size, a hundred percent of their dollars will come to us this next year. And obviously, as we build a pricing system and go through quarterly bills, you all get that way, that that may change or tweak, but they'll have a better understanding. But 75% of the the few who didn't meeting with them have met with them and will meet with them again, they're indicating that we will see some dollars beyond the 40%. They didn't want to commit the whole hundred percent until we can sort of sit down and quantify that. So we've built a budget based on pretty conservative estimates of what those dollars will look like. And we're confident that we'll be at that or or better with those districts who've had, you know, indicated that it'll be somewhere between 100 and or between 50, 40% and 100. And we'll know those dollars in the next probably two weeks, two to three weeks.
Another thing in that other local revenues is we do some shared positions with schools. Did you mention about the special ed directors and special ed facilitators and social workers that we share with schools?
Yeah, so we do. So schools are able to do operational sharing with other districts or with an AEA. So we have positions where maybe it's our employee in a school district wants to have a special education director or they want to have a curriculum director. So they will contact us, like to share this position. We'd like them three days a week. If you took them two days, we can gain the advantage. And I I don't mean to speak down if you know this, but is that they are allowed to then count additional enrollment for those shared positions. So they, those positions often pay for themselves on the school districts end because they can include, you know, maybe three more students in their enrollment. And so you know, they'll get that 22, 22,000, 21, 22,000 of additional revenue that they'll use to pay for their portion of that person. So it really is a win win for the district. They get access to that professional and they have the process by which they pay for that, especially our smaller districts. It's a great service. So those are reflected there because we pay that first. And the district pays us those dollars for their portion of position.
And I guess the other, the other funding is pretty standard. I think that you've already heard the IDEA grants and and some of the state funding that we receive too. Any, any questions that you have on any of those? Then we'll go to the expenses and there again, we we adjusted the budget based on things a couple of weeks ago. We have had resignations since then. We we are planning to replace some of the positions, but not all of them.
So currently, we we're down about 21 positions out of 235 to give you some. If they are special ed funded position, we are attempting to fill those positions. In some areas, it's interesting. Some areas we have plenty of applicants, others not so much, but in special ed, we are filling those positions. On the on the EdServe media end, we're taking a little bit more of a wait and see approach until we finalize the dollars that are coming back with the districts. So I think as I mentioned, there's kind of that fine line. We don't, we obviously can't overstaff, but we also need to staff in a way that continues to provide the services that districts expect so that they don't make a choice to do something different the following year, right? So we have to be staffed to the point of of providing the services that we've always provided. So in special ed, we're confident that most of those positions will will be filled. Audiology is obviously is a more of a struggle on the on the on the EdServe and media end, we're going a much slower pace. And then not reflected in there, of course, I mentioned, I should talk about administrative positions. So our administrative budget will be cut in half for next year. I know the goal is 30%, but we'll be at about 50% because of the shared top three positions that I mentioned. We also have six regional administrators or assistant regional administrators. We'll cut that in half to three for next year. So and a lot, a lot of that is just is is taking advantage of attrition. That may be too slim. I think I heard a question about that earlier. When when is too much? You know, when is it too much? And we could be at that point. But again, we're kind of taking a wait and see attitude. If the goal is 30% and we can go to 50%, that gives us an opportunity to look at our budget and look at need and maybe build back in some of those positions to stay below that 30%. But we'll be, we'll be, we'll be we'll be moving fast next year. Anything else?
Yeah. Are there any other questions on the proposed expenditures? I guess the the last slide then had that detailed budget. Which I don't, I don't know if you got a copy of it or not, but if there's any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer them.
Questions from board members?
Well, even with all the cuts that are either planned or unanticipated. And the potential consolidation or shared savings. Stan, I think you mentioned, you know, meeting the needs. Do you believe this does that?
Yeah, I think we're going to learn a lot as we go. I think we can meet the needs for the next year. And then the presentation we make next year might be dramatically different as we move into the future. But for next year, we're confident that we can meet the needs of the district. Again, a few outliers with hiring that'll that'll put some stress on the system, but.
What keeps you awake at night about your budget?
Um, well, nothing because I have Sharon. Our budget, our budget, I feel.
You're welcome for the softball.
I I feel confident in for next year, again, that the the piece that we'll be working very fast to develop is the service for fee and what are the right charges and becoming more of a you know, how do we develop a a fee system that incorporates all of the things that need to be accounted for? It's not just the person's time, but it's, you know, those of you in the business world know, it's all the other ancillaries that need to be involved with that.
Are you on your, and your board on your own on that? Is there
so we're.
Board for you for the determining that?
So the AEA system is working pretty hard to to come so that we have a unified approach to that, so that the answer in Dubuque is the same as the answer in Sioux City and everywhere in between. So that it's, you know, as as superintendents or teachers move to district to district or whatnot, they they had, or parents, more importantly, if they live in one community and move to another. That they have the same resources. I'm a pretty big believer that we really need to make sure that parents have the opportunity to educate their kids in small communities if that's where they live and want to to do that. And and that those resources exist in all schools, large and small. I've had the privilege of working in them, both are all large and small, and they're unique and bring great things to their community and to the families and and to make sure that the read, the access to the professionals and the resources they need, need to be available so that somebody can choose to live in a small community or medium sized or large community and know that their kids will have opportunity to maximize their educational experience.
Will that result in some uniformity? Not exactly, but with regard to what people are paid to provide those services? I mean, I know, you know, that's different throughout the state.
Yeah.
That's got to be the challenge.
That is, that is part of the conversation. You know, how do we, how do we do that? You know, cost of living is slightly different from place to place. And so that would have to be reflected, but we are working hard to make sure that there is a system approach to ensuring that, you know, move into the this new world of service for a fee in a in a uniformed way that that brings everybody that brings the services to the districts that they need.
I think my mind was going there too, kind of Brian, in between the question is, is there uniformity and fees for service? And how does, what does that landscape look like?
So that's what we're developing. We're meeting every two weeks to to put that together. While actually back in Des Moines on Monday and Tuesday, working with the team to try to develop that so that we do have some some uniformity of what's available to families, to districts, and then the fee structure that makes it available, but also then creates an employability situation where we can continue to hire the the very best people available.
The fee we're talking about is what the school district pays the AEA
Correct.
for providing the service for the school district students.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. That's, it's flipping the model, you know, currently we we receive funding and and we build a budget and a and a system and a team that serves all kids regardless of where they live. Now that changes it to school districts will choose. will choose what services they want. And and there's a balance because a larger district like Dubuque, I was, so I can talk about them, I feel like, you know, that's 35% of our funding. If they choose, then how does that not impact? And how do we build a system that doesn't impact smaller districts? So that's the challenge. We're working as a system to figure that out.
So Stan, you'll be shared next year with Central Rivers?
Correct.
And you're also reducing regional directors, administrators and and both. And so how's that going to work for you?
Well, you know, that's, part of this is just trying to capitalize on opportunity. And so the opportunity is there to try this. And will we learn some lessons about what works really well? Absolutely. Will we learn some lessons where maybe we overreached and have to build some things back in? Certainly, that'll be part of it as well. So, you know, it's what's it's where we're at in our evolution, and it's what's best for the system and what's best for kids, I believe. And so we'll go into it with our eyes wide open and put a few extra miles on the car. But, you know, we'll, I think it's a good experiment to see what is, you know, where is that equilibrium for the system?
Yeah, I think it's great you're undertaking the challenge. I think any combination is good if you can still get excellent service and save a buck along the way.
Absolutely. As long as we can serve kids to the to the level of of what their needs are, that's that's the first metric.
Sharon, I know under median technology funding, you can recover special ed deficits. Do you currently do that at all?
No, we don't.
To Frank, and you mentioned the conversations with about 25% of districts and talking through what what services they wanted to continue to partner with AEA is on. Have you seen any themes in those conversations or trends?
So we're actually starting those next week. So now my first round, I think, is next Friday, and then the following week is with with the up. So I'm certainly happy to have that conversation. But in about a week and a half or two weeks, we'll see. I know that media is of urgent concern for the ones I have talked to, especially as it impacts their their preschools. They have partnered preschools through their preschool grants. And we've heard very clearly from the preschool folks that they're very dependent on the materials that we provide. So that so that's a decision that's going to have to be made by the district in conjunction with their preschools and us. So that's just one that I that happened to off the top of my head because I get that question a lot.
So a lot of what you're all doing now as a result of this House file passing, are these things that you should have been doing over the years in communication with each other as chiefs and providing services to students and?
You know, it's it's hard for me to talk about that because I wasn't here. You know, I was a superintendent at that time. So I think they've always talked a lot about those services. But in the the original legislation is a mandate to make to specialize in what your districts want. So if 60% of the districts in your footprint, if 60% of the superintendents in Keystone come to me and say, Stan, we need you to add this service, then by statute, our board is supposed to consider that. So over 50 years, that's happened, right? Where it wouldn't so we there are differences that are specific because of needs of students that were a decision made by the agency. There are differences because of that that piece of legislation that said that, you know, districts have some say in what services are provided. So, you know, I, again, I wasn't there, so I can't speak to that than to know that there have been longstanding system conversations and approaches with with the chiefs. And you may have noticed in your presentations that many of the chiefs are new. Three are in their first year, two of us are in our second year. And so there the history is 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 short in some ways. And so we're trying to look and and figure out what the next phase is and how we keep serving kids. So I guess that wasn't a good answer to your question, but.
No. And so you've been in a large district, a medium and a small. As a superintendent, did you feel that the AEA is for meeting your students' needs and then those students who are actually showing those results in testing and achievement?
So as a large school superintendent, I never felt like our test results, the the AEA system enhanced what we provided for kids, but the with the OT and the PT. But since the educators, the teachers, special education teachers are mine, I always felt like that data belonged to me. Should I have looked at it as a shared piece of data with the AEA system? Possibly. I do now. And that's why we're building our strategic plan to to call out student achievement specifically because now sitting in this seat, I see where those opportunities exist. When I was a superintendent, I don't know that I necessarily did.
Maybe because it was just entrenched in the system and
Sure.
Had been perpetuated for decades, right?
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the Keystone AEA budget as presented.
Second?
And moved by Brian and second by Mary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same signs? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your service and
Thank you.
Being on the board. It's gonna be a thankless job. I appreciate you.
Oh, come on, we're thanked all the time.
Yeah, this is fun.
So this might seem a little like the movie Groundhog's Day. It's both myself and Jennifer once already. Well, I changed my I changed my lanyard if that that makes a difference. So.
I know someone said that earlier. Gonna put a different colored jacket on.
Different glasses.
Right, exactly.
Welcome back and we'll move forward with Mississippi Bend.
And thank you for having us. I'm the shared chief administrator with Mississippi Bend and Grantwood AEA this year. And so we'll give you a little bit of a introduction to Grantwood, to Mississippi Bend. And I'm going to probably slide through slides that were more systemic that you've probably seen in the good times. But John Spear with me.
Jennifer Coombs Johnson with Sedop Rivers in Mississippi Bend, so.
So probably, again, like I said earlier, Mississippi Bend has a plan on a page that has core values and goals. And like all agencies, we're working on finding impact data, both qualitative and quantitative. Annual progress report is linked to the slides and it proves that later that interests you. System. So what what is a little unique about Mississippi Bend? Because every AEA has regional uniquenesses because of, you know, our customers who are our districts have assisted with services. Couple of them, we run a homeschool assistance program. It's a consortium. We actually employ teachers and materials for a small group of districts within Mississippi Bend. So they're actually housed in in our agency. So they just had an event honestly yesterday, kind of a fair that where kids could show off the things that they had done. I was in a lesson about a month ago, it was homeschool students, but they came to Mississippi Bend in a lesson. It was a health lesson. So it's kind of a unique program, kind of. It's fun to see kids, you know, in our buildings, which is always always fun. Another uniqueness, and I believe we're the only AEA that does this. So we actually provide sign language interpreters. Most AEA's contract with private business. This is something that's been a longstanding program for Mississippi Bend. So those would be just a couple of the the unique things that that and are proud of offering our districts. What what are we like? We cover a six county area, 47,800 students, about 3,600 educators, 21 public schools, and about 15 non-public accredited, non-public schools, about 300 staff, give or take a little bit. You know, maps of our offices, you know, again, like all AEA's, we do have regional offices. It actually saves the agency's travel costs because every staff is assigned to a regional office that oftentimes is much more closely aligned with the districts they serve. So that's a model that's carried out throughout our system. And our our leadership structure would not be all that different, like what you've seen before, similar to a school. Probably the biggest uniqueness right now is that it's shared chief administrative position. And obviously, Mississippi Bend will will look to efficiencies as well, just like all of the agencies have talked about before. We're all interested in being as efficient as we can. And as opportunities present themselves, we certainly would take advantage of that to be more streamlined. That is our our plan. Moving forward, this just breaks our employees down just a little bit. It would be very similar percentage wise to kind of what you've seen in previous agency presentations. If you wanted a little more detail, there is the staffing level detail for Mississippi Bend. You know, assets of, you know.
Similar to other AEA's, we do have van delivery. So we have a van, two delivery vans. We have a couple vehicles. We have a lot of print shop equipment that are in our capital assets and our technology as well. So very similar to other AEA's as far as asset makeup. So this is the revenues for Mississippi Bend, just like the other formats with most of the other AEA's presentation. So the first two columns there are the the initial budget that was presented to you. And then the second two columns are reflecting the House File 2612. A couple of things in that local revenue that I'll mention, we do have a partnership school that is a consortium that is revenue is located in the local revenue line item as well as the HACAP that John just Jen Driver said, and any kind of programs that we offer to our local districts. Again, just like others, the state aid, other state revenues is the categoricals and the other federal revenues are the title funds. What I did with the reduction for House File 2612, I reduced it by the obviously the ed serve and the media dollars, also the TQ and the family educator partnership grant that is no longer going to be funded here. On the expenditure side, our expenditures again were, we kept them pretty similar to what we had originally projected. Again, we are still trying to assess our staffing plan. We still anticipate that several districts are going to participate with the 60% that they can purchase back. So we didn't want to remove those dollars because we know that we'll have to have the bodies there to provide the services. So I did reduce some dollars there for some staffing, some more overhead type staffing that we won't be replacing, as well as the FVP grant. I took that out as well. So again, still so many unknowns, not knowing exactly how much to reduce that expenditure side. We wanted to be more conservative than not. So leaving those expenditures in. Historical fund balance, we do have $3.5 million that was committed for a renovation project that we will not be doing in Mississippi Bend. So that's part of our committed dollars. And we do also have self insured health plans. So we do have a reserve balance of about $514,000 for our self insured health.
Can I?
Sure.
So are any other AEA self insured?
Central Rivers is self insured. I believe Heartland is self insured as well on Mississippi Bend. And then there's a mix. Some are partially self insured. So.
Grantwood is self insured in a consortium with Kirkwood College and four or five schools. So it's a it's an entity. It's a group self insured plan.
Yeah.
The self insurance, you said it was 517,000?
Yes, yes, that's.
Not a lot.
It is. It is low. It is low. You're right. We bare bones. Yes. And actually, we were hoping to build that budget up or that fund balance up for our self insurance. But actually, we've been performing very well with our self insurance. It's always been something that we look at every year as far as is this a good model, self insurance versus fully insured? And it's always bode well as far as cost wise. It's always been much less to maintain a self insured health plan. So we've continued to do that. But yeah, this next year, we've actually had a very good claims experience this year. So we have a 0% increase for our health insurance next year, which was almost unheard of. So.
Where do you at what level do you have reinsurance on your plan?
Hundred thousand. Yes, hundred thousand. Yeah.
Limits your exposure?
Yes, it does. Yes. That does help. And we assess that every year as well, just to make sure we're at the best levels. Any questions? This last slide as well is the notice for our public hearing, which we did present our budget in February, and it was approved at our public hearing in February, our board.
You don't do that in that.
Yeah. Several pages. Be happy to answer any.
Are you waiting for questions?
Yes, please. Any questions?
Good morning.
So John, you've been a superintendent of a medium sized school district, right?
Well, and and would I consider for Iowa, a large school district.
You're right.
Right.
Yeah, you're right. And so now you're at at an AEA. So as a if you put your superintendent hat on, did you feel that you were getting the services that you did for your students out of Grantwood AEA?
I did. I mean, I wouldn't I wouldn't be the chief right now if I didn't believe that in the mission and the services the agency provided. You know, I was the superintendent of the 13th, 14th largest district in Iowa. And I felt as though services received from Grantwood were top notch.
And did you feel that your students had advanced academically? Or their scores reflected the service that you were receiving from the point?
It would it would depend on the building, you know. And I think you see that a lot in districts. When you have multi building districts, you always want every district to advance like all the others. But we had bright spots and areas that we needed to work on district. So for example, not all of our achievement scores were equal in in our buildings, although our buildings were we're on one campus. So there are no neighborhood schools. So our our elementary buildings, their elementary buildings was my elementary buildings. They were demographically fairly balanced because you there's no assurance that your neighbor's third grader would be in the same building as your own third grader. I always I thought that Grantwood AEA served a larger district as a good outside source of of counterbalance to what you were thinking of doing and what you're wanting to do. So I highly valued our relationship with Grantwood AEA.
So now that you put your, and I'm only asking you this because you're inexperienced as as the previous chief said, there are a lot of new chiefs within the AEA system. So you see, you put your AEA hat on and you look across the districts that you're serving. Do you feel that you can do more? You're doing exactly what you need to do for the students?
Well, I think we can always do more. I mean, I mean, quite frankly, part of our strategic plan at Grantwood AEA in Mississippi Bend is to help better define and outline how we can impact data that most people think are out of our control. Again, if you you don't directly teach students, you have to impact those scores a different way. And I think if you do those things with fidelity, and we know the most valuable thing is a teacher, and if we can help teachers be more 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 efficacious with students, that's a direct line to improve scores. And so that's why Mississippi Bend and Grantwood AEA have tried to winnow down the things we do. We have priority areas, and we're trying to find impact data that would support those.
I just really find that it's a unique position to be in as a superintendent and then a AEA chief, because now you can see both sides of things. Why do you think House File Thank you. 2612 happened?
Um.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, I I mean.
For all the.
I am. I think there there was a desire to be more efficient. I think that's a large part of it. And I think we can meet that challenge. I mean, the next year, next year will be rocky. And we've asked for patience with with our districts because we know it's not going to be exactly the way that it was. We're all going to have some staff that we won't be able to replace. And so I think we will reach an equilibrium. Anytime there's a large change, it takes a couple of years probably to reach an equilibrium. And I think that would be true of our system. Will we be more efficient? Yeah, we certainly will. And so I don't know that that's necessarily, you know, a bad thing to kind of rethink about the ways that you do things. And certainly, we are reimagining ourselves into more of a business model than what you would have thought maybe was an educational model.
And it will keep. And it will keep intact the integrity of services to our students?
It will depend on what the equilibrium has reached. Um, you know, um, a lot of that will depend on, you know, I think what the study committee finds, you know, with the legislature. We all know that by December, end of December, there'll be recommendations around the AEA system with the study committee. Um, I, I do worry that we may lose the ability depending on what the whole shift is over time. Um, I, I think the AEA system is allowed a student in Exyra to by and large have the same opportunities this student has had in Lamar. Um, and the AEA system is a big part of that because we can, we can, uh, we can send, we can send help to Cedar Rapids and we can send help to, um, Lone Tree for Cedar Rapids, or we can send help to Davenport, just as well as Cal Wheat if you're Mississippi Bend AEA. And I, I think we are an equalizer. And I think we are an equitable agency that allows kids to have opportunities that they may not have been able to have without our services.
The services for a fee, fee for services.
Right.
Are, are you participating in the study group on that?
We are, we are. In fact.
Or is it all of you?
It's such a, it's such a big change. It really is by and large, every chief administrator, EdServe, media, special ed.
Okay. So it's a big group.
We, most of our work is done, uh, in small groups, but then we all, we come back. I mean, it is a big, it is a big shift. It's, it's daunting to do in a two and a half month period, but you know, I mean, I kind of like challenges.
Do you think that'll have an impact on uniformity of compensation?
Um, we, we are trying to find a sweet spot that, that would be someone, someone somewhat comparable, you know, uh, costs. But there's going to have to be some factors because it's just more expensive to live in areas and salaries may be a little bit higher. But we're going to try to have some sort of an equitable costing factor. And I think we can accomplish that as well. I mean, the, the, I don't, I can guarantee you nine AEA's have never worked more closely together than I think they have the last four years. It's, it's been a constant, uh, drumbeat of the chief group that we, we work together. Um, and all of us are doing things where we can help others be better and lift someone else up. I maybe they'll help, uh, the, the different agency do X and someone might be able to help me do Y. I think that's a good thing.
Did, did I hear one of you say that you canceled the capital project or did you just defer it?
No, we're, we're not going to. It was an upgrade to our building.
Okay. He just, it's off.
Yes.
Was it off anyway, or is it part of this process?
Um, it was delayed, but we knew that something was coming. So we purposely delayed it and now it's off. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
John, talk, talk to us about the homeschool assistance consortium. How, how many kids fall apart?
Usually it's a, a, a few over a hundred, maybe a hundred, a hundred and twenty ish. I can't remember if it's six or nine districts. I.
Yeah, I, I believe it's closer to nine, nine districts. Yeah. And it does fluctuate a little bit, I think.
How many years about? Has that been going on?
A, a long time. It wa, it was before Bill. So I'm going to, I'm going to guess 12, 13, 14 years probably.
Have you seen any significant fluctuation in student participation in that?
During COVID, definitely. There was a huge spike up. It has come back down a bit. But yeah, there, it's, it had been pretty consistent as far as enrollment. There are slight, yeah, ticks and down ticks, but, um, during COVID, those couple of years, it spiked very high. And now it's come back to more of a normal, I guess, level.
I just haven't heard of consortium like that before. Other questions?
One of your top goals articulated is, based on the letter, it's the instruction. Can you expand a little bit on that?
Yeah. So, um, we've worked with districts, um, implementing the science of reading. And I think that would be true of all the AEA's. That's a topic. Um, so we've worked with districts around letter training, early literacy. You know, Shane, who, who is our EdServe director would probably be able to give you a better idea. But, um, we've worked with nearly every district in Mississippi Bend in the area of early literacy. And the, the main driver for us is science of reading. Uh, you know, we, both Shane and I, um, I have, I was an English teacher. I was high school, but I still have a passion for reading because, you know, literacy is a gateway to all other learning really in a lot of ways. So it's been an emphasis of, of most of the AEA's.
Other questions? I mean, now I would, you would say emotion?
Second.
Okay.
To approve Mississippi Bend's AEA budget for 2025, I presume.
Again, again?
Any further discussion? Hearing now those in favor to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Coming back again?
No. If we do, it would really be round hawks day. We know. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Should put them back back on.
It's chicken.
Yeah.
All right. We got Northwest AEA.
Hey, good, John. How are you? Good afternoon.
Yours.
Yeah. Good afternoon, board members. Dan Cox, uh, chief administrator Northwest. This is my sixth year. Uh, lifelong Iowa, 33 years serving schools across the state, uh, from Essex to State Center to Cedar Falls, Waterloo, Charles City, and now here in Northwest Iowa. And with me is Jody Ryan.
Yep. Um, this is, I'm just finishing my eighth year at Northwest Area Education. Um, previous to that, I was two years in Sioux City and about four and a half years in Akron Westfield School District. Um, before that I was in Publica County.
So the packet in front of you would have most of the materials. I intentionally chose not to put too much up on the screen for you because we're the presentation rather than the, the TV monitor. So I, I want to start with our mission, vision and anchors. Uh, when AEA four, the very, uh, four Northwest counties in Iowa merged with AEA 12, the Sioux City area back in 2006, uh, they crafted a mission statement that says Northwest AEA provides visionary leadership and quality student centered services through relationships with families, schools and communities. And so you'll hear family, schools and communities come up, uh, and amended as well as a real central focus for us. Three years ago in 2021, we redid our vision statement, uh, because we wanted it to be something that really had more impact on our daily work. And so it reads, uh, that our vision is to be the first contact for timely and ongoing support to enhance performance, uh, outcomes and wellbeing of all learners. And so we also at that time did a restructuring of our agency and I'll talk about that in a second with our, uh, organizational chart to wrap around that vision statement and really have that be what guides us. And then our anchors, our core values, relationships, responsiveness and results. And that goes back to, uh, when the AEA was formed as well, LaStalma, our chief at that time, brought that. And that really is foundational and all of the work that we do. So throughout this presentation, hopefully you're going to hear echoes of the mission, the vision and the anchors. Uh, you can leave that right there. Uh, gave you some narrative that you can read and maybe ask us. I will tell you that my default is to be concise. So, um, I'm not going to talk for 30 minutes and neither is Jody. So we'll allow you to ask us questions. Then we'd love to go more deeply into that. Uh, some successes, uh, we think our structure is a, a real success for our family, schools and communities. And the way that we've been able to repurpose the people that we had on staff so that we can serve them. On the map, you see that we have, uh, 10 counties. It's 34 public school districts, 32 accredited non-public schools. Uh, we do have the second highest number of non-public students, uh, of the nine AEA's. It's roughly 45,000 students. 5,000 of them would be enrolled in non-public schools. Uh, 3,300 teachers roughly, when you add in the other people who work in the school system, it grows to about 6,000. Uh, and then you can see the non pubs are listed there as well as the, the names written across where they are located within the public schools that we serve. In your packet, you'll see the faces of the people who serve as our region directors and then the regions that they represent. And then the, the next page would be the networks. And so what we did is, uh, we combined down to just three regions and then we clustered school districts into either two or three and put somebody as that first contact back to the vision statement. Uh, and the person who is our first contact is a, an EdServe person who either has a strength in literacy, math or behavior. And in each of those four networks, there would be someone who has each of those three. So there's at least one network with a literacy, one with a math, one with a behavior. And then the fourth one would be another one of those three. We then also put in best practice, uh, coaches. Uh, and everything that we did is really around the National Implementation Research Network or NERN that says, you know, when teachers come to us for something and then they go back and the whirlwind swallows them back up and they can't implement the thing that they just learned, then the end, um, beneficiary of that, whether it's the family, the school or the community, doesn't win out on what they just learned. But if we can help them with the implementation and by putting some best practice coaches in all subject areas. So somebody who would come and work alongside a teacher to say, all right, you came to a training. Now let's talk about what that's going to look like with your classroom. Let me observe. Let me get some feedback. That's been a real strength for us. Uh, and at the system coach level, they work with the administrative teams. And so it's sitting down with the superintendents, the building principals, whoever the superintendent says, uh, yeah, come to this group of people. And let's talk systemically about what's going on, on, on in our school system from Whiting, the very tiniest of our schools with fewer than 200 students K-12 to Sioux City with more than 15,000. And so that's what we've tried to do to wrap around our supports for, um, the family, schools and communities that we serve. If you jump to the org chart, there they are at the center. And we intentionally made this into a circle. Uh, we didn't embrace the top down method because we want that focus, that's that core thing to be our family, schools and communities. And we talk about who is closest to the center at our agency. So we've really eliminated things like boots on the ground and in the trenches and all that war terminology that filters into most organizations. We talk about who's closest to the center. Well, that's the direct and related service providers. And how do we support you? The ones who are having the most impact, uh, on our center. And then radiating out from that, you will see the levels that go to, uh, the directors and then to the executive directors. And then out at the very bottom, you'll see the chief administrator and the board. And all of us are wrapping around the supports that we provide to those that we're serving. We have 283 staff currently. Um, that's going to drop to about 250, um, by the time we get to August. We had the lowest turnover rate. We had the most people who had really hung in with us through all of the chaos this winter and spring. We were only at 5% of folks who had decided to depart. And then that has mushroomed up to about 11% now. Uh, so currently standing at 28, it's probably going to hit 30, maybe a little bit above that by the time we get to the start of the school year. And I think turn over to you, Jody, and.
You guys have any questions on any of this narrative or are you digging into numbers?
Uh, not yet.
Okay. Numbers it is. Um, so what I created here is some very concise slides. So what we have here is proposed revenues by major source, also something similar you've seen all day. Um, the first, um, white version is what we approved in January, um, for the February, um, sent due date to the DE. And the second part is what we amended after House File 2612 came out. Um, the real changes there, we implemented the 60% reduction in the ED services. So property taxes went down. Yeah. As part of that, I took down some interest revenue, but we also increased kind of what we have for a shared social worker program. So we also have a shared social worker program similar to a lot of the other AEA's within our, um, uh, within Iowa. Um, gotten a lot of demand for that, um, or actually had a lot of schools want to try to jump on for the upcoming school year. And then we also do have, um, sign language, which is also similar to what Mississippi, Mississippi, Mississippi Bend had right before us. Um, other than that, um, state revenues, that the only thing going into there is we reduced the professional development funds that were eliminated with House File 2612. Um, the IDA federal grant, that includes the family education partnership grant that we received that was also eliminated. Um, the other federal revenue stayed the same. What we have going in there is our Title III, Title I and Medicaid dollars. We are one of the top claims claimers. As far as AEA's go for Medicaid dollars, we collect about $300,000 a year. Um, we've really tried to take advantage of those funds the last few years. And, um, when we started implementing, um, claiming for speech, language services, we actually added staff to do so. That was the big selling point. And then other financing sources is just our, um, debt payment for, um, our Apple computer lease. Questions on that? Um, and then the next slide is our proposed expenditures. Um, same setup, what we approved in January to what we amended right after, after House File 2612 came out. We kept things a lot fairly similar. Um, what I really tried to do is, um, remove things that we know. So any press development supplement, the TQ funding, I removed those line items. Um, the special ed director, I removed those line items. Um, and then just some general reductions across the board to get to a fund balance that we think might be close to accurate, uh, which was around the $3 million. Still have a lot of work to go on here because obviously this still does include the seven and a half million dollar cut, not the 32.5 million dollar cut. Um, but we, this is just the working budget to get to what our operating budget would be. But I still anticipate it would bounce to somewhere to the $3 million. Um, and then these are the comparisons. So this is just a summarized version of what we publish, but I just separated it out by revenue expenditure separately. So it's easier to see visually. Um, what you're looking there for fiscal year 2425, that was the board approved budget in January is what we're looking at there. Not what we anticipate with the changes of House File. Fiscal year 2223, um, does look like an outlier. Um, that is because of, we had a building sale. Um, we also had some construction projects that were going on and a debt issue that happened the year before that. So our fund balance, when we get to that slide, will look wonky because of those issues. But 42 million isn't our, our typical revenue. Our typical revenue is around the 37, 38, or was around the 37, 38. Expenditures, um, again, based on the January proposal, um, built with just a general percentage increases for most line items. Um, and what we approved in January is just the starting point because we work on our operating budget all year round, all, all spring long to get to what our line item budget would be in the fall. And fiscal year 23 is also high, um, because that building sale went directly to paying off our building construction project. Um, we actually paid off our, um, debt issue for the new building, uh, eight years early. We don't even actually own any, owning on it currently.
So a little more context on the facilities because I skipped that part. So we have, uh, six locations. Uh, we sold our building in Sioux Center to the Northwest Community College for 1.9 million. And we, in Sioux City, left the original, uh, Sioux City East Junior High School, the first junior high built west of the Mississippi. Uh, it opened on January 28th, 1918. That was our, uh, office. We bought a call center. We spent some money to renovate it. So we didn't build anything new. Uh, and all this was done with the approval of the Department of Ed, of course, and moved across town to the Sioux Gateway Airport area. It's easier to get to. Our parking went from 113 spaces to 450. Uh, we went from being on three levels to being on one level. Uh, we also shed 65,000 square feet of space between Sioux Center and Sioux City by downsizing to a smaller location. We still have unused space that were in the talks and, uh, recently got approval to enter into a lease with Western Iowa Tech Community College so that they would lease out part of it, uh, because we're really using about 62,000 square feet of a 77,000 square foot building. So, uh, trying to downsize our footprint, uh, we sold also our Cherokee regional office. We get to remain there for another nine to 10 months. Uh, and then it's by next March 1st, uh, we have to be out. Uh, and we won't probably replace that. We'll look to do something different with our facility there. We lease space in, uh, LaMars at a really, really low rate. Uh, and then we've got an office in Dennison and one in Ottawa as well. And we will look to, uh, modify that accordingly, uh, either from the task force or through other efficiencies.
Dan, other chiefs were talking about reducing administrative costs. What are your plans for your?
So we don't have any administrators. Sorry. We have one administrator leaving and we're not replacing her position. Uh, and we are engaged in conversations about, uh, future sharing. So Prairie Lakes is our natural partner, um, just based on location. And we also have a 30-year history of sharing other things with Prairie Lakes Library and Media. library, media, science kits, those kinds of things, professional learning even. And our, our management staff is actually engaged in conversations about what it might look like to reduce some of their own costs, even if nobody leaves. So I would call it in the works right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a quick reminder, the partnership with Western Iowa is for their aviation maintenance program. The board approved that on consent.
Yeah.
Four meetings ago.
Yeah, thank you. Well, sorry, we also have Jody leaving, so Tuesday is her final day.
Are you going to replace her?
We have also our business manager leaving, so we have to have somebody because this is a devastating one-two punch for us. Ideally, we would like to share with another AEA. We have posted for a business manager type position to help us kind of get through a transition time. Yeah, I forgot. I'm in denial that she's done on Tuesday.
And then this is just kind of a history of our fund balance. So as I was mentioning before, you see this spike. That's because we issued $7 million in debt. The way that sale worked is when we bought their facility, they actually included our building as part of that sale. So we didn't have to try to dispose of 100-plus-year-old school building that you can't really do a lot with without spending lots of money.
There's a former superintendent who tried for five years in Charles City and couldn't do it. I don't know if you ever had that problem, John, but that was a real blessing as part of the deal that they just took our building.
He did well.
Yeah. But they had a year and a half. There was also a leaseback provision. So they had a year and a half to, or a year to move out of their facility because they had to find solutions for themselves. And we had a year and a half to do construction and move in. So we had to hold on to that fund balance for a period of time. Construction started when we went out for bid a year later. Obviously, construction's costs changed dramatically in a year, so it did cost us a million dollars more than we were anticipating. Luckily, with some one-time funding and other things that came in, we were able to do it. And construction started fiscal year 22, we moved in last spring. Other than that, our actual unassigned general fund balance has been fairly stable. We've always set a goal of utilizing as much of our current money as we possibly can on the students that when we get it, we should spend it on the students. We still have to have a reserve because you can't function without a reserve. But our floor was always, our goal was always 9%. Right now, we are sitting right at 15 with a plan to use roughly 500,000-ish annually of our fund balance for operations. Because you don't want to go too fast because then you create yourself a funding cliff. We plan to use, we use 400, we use 2.1 million for our down payment on the building because we had saved mostly because of COVID costs. When we weren't traveling, we weren't doing anything, you didn't have expenditures. We had $2 million that we put down on the building originally. And then we used 430,000 in fiscal year 23 and restimating to use about 800,000-ish this year. That's an estimate because you always have, we do have some unfilled positions and things like that. And then this shows that we will move to about a $3 million fund balance, which was right at 9%. Based on the current situation, I do believe that's where we will be. We will plan to use as much as we can to maintain staffing levels while we work through this period of uncertainty, but go down to no more than the minimum that we've established. And that's the end of the presentation. So if you guys have any questions?
Questions from board members?
Yeah. Succinctly.
Yeah.
Tell me more about NER.
And so it's just the, it's national research that's all about implementation and how that's really the path toward getting the results that you want.
I'd never heard of that.
Yeah. So my Director of Special Education and Director of Educational Services, Media and Technology, they were really schooled in that and said, hey, we're going to make some changes and we really need to base that around this NER research. And we need to be out even in a stronger way, helping teachers fight against the whirlwind and implement the learning that they're coming to us to get.
Just kind of a side note, when we were going through this implementation, obviously, when you do things like that, you need staffing, you need staffing to fill those positions. But we've actually increased our staffing levels in the past six years in the certified group by about 46, 46 FTE, while reducing administrative FTE, reducing classified FTE and reducing management support FTE. So it's really been demonstration of where we are spending our funding.
And that's a strong attribute to Jody as well. So typically CFOs like to make sure they guard the money and tell people, no, don't spend it, don't spend it. She really challenged our administrative team to say, here are a lot of line items and we never seem to spend that money. So rather than letting it collect dust, how can we reallocate that so that we're actually getting the impact that we want each year for the family schools and communities that we serve? And we were able to do that and add those positions.
You mentioned, you mentioned the turnover now at about 11%.
Correct.
What was it the prior year and what's it been historically?
So the past two years, it's been 15 and 11%, but up to even a week ago, we were just sitting at 5%. Like we, we had gone through, there's kind of been with the AA system that there are people who come and then they stay a while. And when their career is over, then it's time for the next wave to come in. And we had kind of ended that wave. And so in December, when we've put out an incentive in the past for people to let us know early so that we can start advertising, we had one person take us up on it. I mean, that was just unheard of compared to the past couple of years. But it's because our staffing has shifted and now the majority is, the majority would be people who have been there 10 years or less. And it used to be we were heavier on the more than 10 years angle.
Yeah, even the year I started, it was five, less than 10 people that we had as new hires. Now we're typically around 30, just because of, not necessarily resignations, but it's mostly retirements.
Other questions? Hearing that, I'm very technology.
I'm moving approved Northwest AA budget as presented.
By Brian and second by Nathan, further discussion. During that, those in favor, any questions?
Hi.
Same signs. Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll all take a 10-minute break back in two o'clock. Laura's yours.
Thank you. I'm Dan Mart, Chief Administrator for Prairie Lakes AA. I have been there.
And Echo?
Oh, do I need to mute?
You seem to go to your speaker settings and turn your speaker settings all the way down or completely off for your laptop.
Turn the volume down, as I always say.
Correct.
Off now?
Yes.
There we go. Again, DMR, Chief Administrator, Prairie Lakes AA. This is my 35th year in education, but only about eighth month on the job. So I'm one of the newbies hired at Prairie Lakes. Ironically, I began my admin career at Prairie Lakes, actually at Lakeland before it merged. So in my 35 years, I was a high school business teacher and high school K-12, pre-K-12 principal, then superintendent from a small, of a small district and then of two small districts that whole grade shared, then merged. Then medium-sized growing district and then a medium-sized district in declining enrollment. So I've had the gamut. I've had the gamut of four different AEA's during my tenure as an educator. So I've had a good experience, different experiences with the different AEA's. So from that, this one opened up was the reason why I came back to work at Prairie Lakes. Michelle Dowd.
Hi, I'm Michelle Dowd. I'm the Chief Financial Officer and Board Secretary for Prairie Lakes. I've been with the agency now for 22 years. For that, I was in public accounting as certified accountant and spent 10 years doing audits and did, doing school districts and community colleges and just a variety of different types of, so. Same, been here for 22 years, so we're teaching Dan everything he needs to know.
So he's going to answer all questions too. All right, well, we're going to go through just very briefly, briefly through the slides. It's been a long afternoon or a long day for you. So we know, you know, seeing this material, we'd like to see if you have questions. Our vision and mission are posted there. Just keep going from there. John, do you want me to read those or we can go from those?
Same then, we appreciate.
Which is, you don't want to move that?
Okay, well, continue on.
One of the things that we're, we work really hard at AA that I've noticed since I've been there, just the collective commitments that you see on the screen of professionalism, leadership. Partnership is huge, collaboration is huge, especially we are the second smallest AA of the nine. So it's kind of like when I was back as superintendent in a small district and we had to look at all resources and how do I share with my neighbor to get things done? I'm feeling that way too at Prairie Lakes as we see our student numbers decline too. It's a very similar feeling I had, obviously, when I was superintendent. And then the last thing, making sure we're data informed, those decisions. We have four goals that we adopted this year. Contributed to be a safe, supportive and collaborative environment, not just for us, but help our, help our schools, both public and non-public accomplish the same. Build the capacity of staff, educational partners and families to provide a high-quality learning experience, promote fiscal and resource sharing opportunities with and among our partners. And finally, always market our services and resources through, that we offer from the agency. I think that's one of the things that we learned as House File 2612 was developing and through is how much our public didn't understand what was available. So it's always that constant education piece of not only what they are eligible for, but what also is offered. And we've seen that from this slide probably from the other AEA's. We'll continue. On special education, we are very similar to every other AA, what we offer. One of the things I'll just point out on this, we have a unique partnership with several of our schools where we offer an elementary program for those students who have some behavior challenges, who may need some regulation. We partner with the schools, we do the hiring of the staff for that. But it is then, one of our local districts is the fiscal agent for that. There is a process for students to be eligible to attend there and even with the goal that we help with that regulation so they can return back to their home districts. This is not only eligible to districts in our AA, but it also goes across AA lines. And obviously, we also share or excuse me, provide the special education and for those in our youth shelter, which is in Fort Dodge. And then we have two different prison programs, one in Rockwell City and then another one in Fort Dodge that we're also responsible for, the special education of those who are eligible. Media tech, very similar to other ones. We are already, as I'll just highlight, one day a week van delivery. How long have you been doing that, Michelle? One day a week to our districts?
Gosh, probably for at least the last four, five years.
Yeah. Again, I was two before when I was there and I got nervous. So again, doing, looking at some efficiencies there, districts are okay with moving down to one day a week in our agency. Educational services, again, very similar to other district or other agencies. Just a couple of successes. One thing that we noted this year, we actually did see an increase in special ed proficiency of about 5%. Again, not where it needs to be, but again, one year. So I'm not saying, oh, we're doing great things yet. I want to see if it's sustained or what our districts are doing. But we did see increase there, same way as math, we saw about a 7% this last year. But again, I'm more of what does the trend look like? Was this a one-year bleep or not? So we'll continue to watch that. Letters has been a big, a big push in our agency. We had seven districts the year before. We're at 14 districts this year that are wanting trading for us for letters. So that has been in, in demand. So we've seen an increase in our digital resources. The last bullet, this is new to the agency this year. So kudos to Suzie Mead, the former chief in our staff, looked at some efficiency with our speech and language departments. Instead of the cult consultant who's always in the building being pulled in to do the evaluation because sometimes there's that pressure by a principal or by a staff member, hey, we checked this out and don't you really think this person really needs some services? Get you and get this. We have three people that that's all they do. They travel at the agency, so they're very independent. They're not hooked with that district and they can go in and do a non-biased evaluation of those kiddos and make sure they really are deserving of those services. Some quotes in there. So what, what does our agency look like? We have 47 districts and non-pubs. So we have 36 publics, 11 accredited non-pubs, 31,000 students, almost 32, broken down 29, 815 public, 2,054 non-public. So again, we don't have a huge number of non-public students. 2,583 students served and through early access, about another 153 kiddo served that are below that, that age form threshold.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just on AEA's in general.
Yeah.
And I should probably know this, but do AEA's do anything or support with ELL learners?
That's our fastest-growing population in our agency. So yeah, so obviously Storm Lake being our number one customer there, but they're not the only ones. An area, if we were to sit down and say, what do we need to do more in, would be that area. There's not another Storm Lake in the state of Iowa to that extent. So, right, so it's like everybody's learning at once, including them. One of my favorite places is to go visit, I was just in that elementary yesterday, but interesting to see all the good work they have going there. But again, it's a challenge, the challenges they face. So I talked about the Lakes Partnership Program. Prairie Lakes also has the Iowa Principal Leadership Academy. So this was actually started when I was a principal and I actually was kind of on the steering committee with this, trying to get this going. We were struggling, we being school districts and I was a principal at the time, of finding people to be administrators because they couldn't get programs anywhere. They either had to drive to Mankato or they drove to Ames. There was nothing in between. So after a long day of teaching, then maybe coaching, then I'm driving to Mankato or I'm driving to Ames for class, we kind of went to the AA, the kind I did, and said, can't we do something? What can we do? So then the AA had that by Mary Maylie at the time, leading this charge of a group, you know, put a committee together to say, what can we do? So this is a new, unique program that's based on standards, it's not based on coursework. Started, I'm going to guess somewhere around 2004. But it is for those people who have a master's degree already but are picking up the admin endorsement. So again, not, not wanting to pursue an advanced career or again, a doctorate. It is for those who want to pick up that admin endorsement. It is about a two-year program where they work on standards, not based on coursework. So a little bit unique, started there, it is in Keystone right now as well. We also do a lot of work with our districts that needed sharing teacher librarian and then also those technology people can't maybe find their own or need somebody in there. We have, we work with them on that. There's a letters information too. We have about, what'd they say, 500, 500 people doing that. So huge demand, I mean, in our district or in our agencies for that. Our structure, very similar to everyone. We have a chief administrator and three others in our cabinet level. So our cabinet is four people, Michelle being one of the members as SBO. We have a Director of Special Education and then the Ed Service and Media Directors combined into one person. We presently house six regional administrators, one is leaving us. We will not be replacing that person. So we'll be cutting some administrative costs there.
Um, just to give you a little breakdown of our staffing, we currently employ 244 staff and we started the year with that many. We're not going to have that many forward. But of that, 163 are certified staff, 39 classified staff, 32 non-bargaining and 10 administrative or supervisory staff. So you can see the percentages there of the breakdown. Educational degrees, I think the other AEA's were also sharing this information with you. Out of 216 of our 244 staff, 88% of them have degrees and of that, 67% have master degrees or higher. And we were kind of asked to give a detail of that staffing and where they're funded. And I don't know that you want to get in the weeds of that right now, but.
No, but could you go back to the last slide?
I sure can.
And I'm just, I'm not sure this is accurate now, but the number of clinical doctors and PhD employees seems like it's a lot higher than other AEA's. Is that, am I imagining that or?
I don't know what the other AEA's have specifically. I do know we do have several of those folks. I believe positions they're holding are, gosh, audiologists for sure. Maybe some school psychs. Yeah. So, and again, I can get you more detail if you wish.
I don't want you to do any research of this. It kind of just popped in my mind. Thank you.
Sure. So we'll bypass that slide then. As far as our AA region, we cover 8,000 square miles. As far as our AA region, we cover 8,000 square miles. And we own three properties and we have office space leased in five other areas. We did start a facility